You are now live on Channel Eight in YouTube.
Fantastic. Thanks, TCTV. Good evening, everyone. The time is now six thirty PM. I'm Chairman Mike Curry, and I'd like to call this Select Board Business Meeting to order on this thirteenth day of September twenty twenty-three. Please rise and join me with for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you for that, everyone. Before we begin, I'd like to state for the record that not only are we being streamed live on TCTV Cable Station Eight and our YouTube web platform, but this evening's recording will also be available for later viewing on our YouTube channel. We in TCTV would be happy if you subscribed. If there are any of our audience members who are or plan to record video, please let us know. Okay, I will announce that we do have a quorum. Gang's all here. As always, our agenda for this evening has been is publicly available at the official source for town information, TempletonMA.gov. There you may sign up for alerts for all public meetings as well as our town administrators' weekly report. I would also encourage those listening who have not yet signed up for Code Red alerts, please do so via our website or by calling eight six six nine three nine zero nine one one, as this is the primary method for engaging with the public for important information. And in light of all the storms that have been happening, the Code Red has really worked out well for me, as I've been getting all the updates that it's specific to my zip code. Although I have the discretion and chairperson to add and remove from the agenda, it has been set to allow for time, personnel, resources, and public awareness. I reserve the right to move I have the reserve the right to move agenda items around to best fit our business and our guests. Excluding board minutes and comments, we have about again twenty-one items on our agenda this evening with an estimated time I estimated in about two and a half hours. But this is your first select board meeting. We are glad that you're joined us. We are proud to serve the community. We will address tonight's business with patience, fairness, and efficiency. We would ask that you do the same for our guests. We're gonna have a great meeting tonight. We have a lot of different things on the meeting tonight. I if if your agenda item is down a little bit lower, I apologize for that. We've got some precedence out there. So just be patient. Usually it's a good meeting, and we're glad that you're participating in your civic duties. Tim, before we move any further, Tim had announcements he'd like to make.
Yep, I would like to piggyback on your Code Reds. I work out of the state three days a week, and it's not only specific to our zip code. It was actually triggering Code Reds at my work location as well, which is kind of interesting because I pay attention which is which. But just do it to acknowledge and thoughts and prayers for the folks in the cities of Fitchburg, Lemonster, North Attleboro, the town of Princeton, and down in the Chicopee Springfield area. Mother Nature really rocked our world Monday night. And looking at all the projections now, I think we have additional concerns to be thinking about as the week progresses.
Thank you for that, Tim. A couple more things before we jump into business. A few comments that we for the guests that we have joining remotely. Actually, I think it's just Ryan, and Ryan knows all the rules. She wouldn't be good town council if she didn't. All right. All right. We're gonna move into approval of minute meetings. Minutes for our prior meetings, and we've got one set for August ninth of twenty twenty-three. And I would entertain a motion at any point.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the minutes from Wednesday, August ninth, two thousand twenty-three, as amended.
Second.
And I'll make the amendment momentarily.
Uh, could you, as presented, we will do.
That's fine, as presented.
Okay. Need a second on that.
Second.
Okay, got the second? Any discussion?
Now, as and now I move to amend. I actually I gave it to Holly already, but under attendance Select Board, the persons who are present via Zoom should be moved down to also present. And there should be a line there that says absent none, because we were all in attendance that evening. That's the only change that I have, and I already gave that to Holly.
Okay.
Same here. I already give mine to Holly, and it's under Action Item Eight, Norfolk County Agricultural. Roman numeral nine. Curry asked about other students. The word asked was admitted.
Okay. Any further amendments? No other amendments? All materials are accounted for?
I do have one to add as well. Okay. Under Action Item Six B, the discussions on Ten Pleasant Street. The Roman numeral two, it says Resident Toth asked why the delay in Ten Pleasant Street. It would be prove us to actually put the first initial and or first name that were about seven toths in the town of Templeton. So we don't know for sure which ones will.
And when is that again? Six?
Near the last. Near the last page.
It just says Toth. If it wasn't that we already had a Toth on the board, because we're all you we're all, you know, just using last names informally.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Good to go on. Any further amendments? And you made you made an amendment. Did anyone second that?
Second.
Same second. All right. We're all proper and good. All right. If I hear nothing else, I'm gonna go to the vote. Matt?
This is on the amendment or as.
The amended minutes for August ninth.
Yeah.
August ninth.
Yes.
Okay, Terry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. We have no executive session minutes this evening, and we are now into citizen input. In light of a long meeting, I'm gonna go ahead and restrict any citizen input to three minutes. Hi, Jeff. How are you?
Wonderful. How are you?
That's an amazing likeness of bear on your chest. Is it bear?
No.
Okay.
First of all, I'll start off on a good note, and I apologize if he if I mess up his name, but I would like to thank Mr. Fichette and his company, Fichette Construction, for volunteering to furnish the time and labor to do the carpentry portion of the sand salt shed over at the Highway Barn. To me, that's a great benefit for the residents. Many towns have a pile of sand salt. Generally, you have to dig into snow. It gets wet, frozen. So having it covered will be a service to the residents, in my opinion, and I want to thank him for volunteering to do that. My next question, not a question, my next item that I'd like to relay to the board, that I don't know if they're aware of it. This is an email I sent August twenty-first to the Records Access Officer, Adam Lamontaine. I requested a copy. I am requesting a copy of any opinion or reference of the state law that a town meeting warrant is open all year long. Because you open and close the warrant. But if you're gonna make the statement that the warrant is open all year long, unless you're making it up, there should be a reference, a law, a legal opinion or something. The response I got was be advised that the town's duty to respond to records requests extends only to records that are in existence and in its custody. Town is under no obligation to create records in response to your request. This appears to be more of a question which we do not provide a service for questions. We do not do research in response to a public records request. If he's telling me that town employees don't ask answer questions from residents, what what do you do? I didn't ask a question. I requested a copy of the law or the opinion or the material used to back up the statement that the town meeting warrant is open all year long. I have looked. I have not found any material, and I find it odd that you open the warrant and close it. If it's open all year long, why would you have to open it? And I'm not gonna ask any questions of the board, because apparently you don't answer questions, according to the town administrator. So I would just ask that you consider the capital improvement bylaw regarding the awarding of opera funds to the water department for a project, even as the bylaw states that regardless of source of funding by a town department or board, the request has to go in front of the Capital Improvements Committee. There is an item in there that, for some reason, if it didn't get put in, there can be a supplemental report from the committee. And in the bylaw under Section B, and such a request cannot, in its opinion, await the annual review cycle. The department shall promptly submit the request to the committee for consideration. In such an event, the committee shall meet expeditiously to consider the matter and file supplement report as set forth above before any vote for appropriation takes place on the admitted request. That meeting happened on August ninth. It is now September thirteenth. I have not seen any posted agenda for a meeting of the Capital Improvements Committee, and I have looked forward going out, and I see none posted. So if you could look into that.
I absolutely will. I've got both things.
And update the town, what you know, when the bylaw is gonna be followed. Lastly, you have an item tonight concerning opera money and premium pay bonuses for town employees. And my question for that, or my concern is why the town employees who did not lose any hours, they didn't lose any pay, they didn't lose a business, they didn't lose their job or nothing. Why do they need a bonus? And veteran services is included in the list. That employee wasn't even working for the town during COVID. Opera funds are is the American Rescue Plan. So I would think those funds would be could be better utilized to assist and help out, benefit the residents of the town who actually did lose jobs. Some people lost business. Some people are trying to get back to where they were in two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty. I would ask the board to consider using the opera funds to provide meals either at the senior center and or to the seniors at their homes as a service to the residents for pick a period. My opinion would be for about a year. The rate of inflation, you know, some people, their social security payments, they're they're on the old. They're just it's not sustainable for them for the expenses that with inflation and everything. And that would, to me, that would be a use of opera money to benefit the residents. Another consideration and concern I have is the amount of people that the food pantry is serving each month. It's going up and up and up, the number of people that it's serving. If you visit there, you make donations on the days that it's open, you can see the people in the line, and it's it really bothers me. I would consider ask you to consider using opera funds to make donations, either the cash or make an arrangement to help out. Again, that would be direct assistance to residents, American Rescue Plan funds. Help the residents. Don't help the government.
All right, Jeff. And is that all you got?
Yes, I would just ask you all to to look at bylaws and and consider, you know, making a big effort to follow them. You're standing in front of people tonight. You're gonna judge whether a dog and their owner violated a bylaw. You need to set the example of board.
Thank, thanks, Jeff.
Example is obligation.
I have got all all four things that you had added, and thanks for that counsel.
I'll email them to you if you wish.
Nope, I wrote them all down.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening.
You too. Really can't.
I will skip the preamble.
Okay. So he was over his three minutes, but if we could be expeditions, but I'm not going to gavel you. So.
Okay, thank you. So the Select Board has a very tough job. You guys all have a very tough job to do. And a lot of things that go on behind the scenes that that nobody sees. You you know, but it's a sad state of affairs where you're regularly having to respond to or defend mistakes that are made by your staff. There's another example of this on August ninth, when I presented information to this board that I was then called down and so told to get my facts straight. All of that information came from a staff member. And I'm sorry, I that that's unacceptable, that I should have to double check your staff's work. I don't know how to put it any plain or any any easy, you know, any more polite than that. And it's repeating. And I didn't get an apology from the individual going, yep, Mrs. Toth, sorry, my bad. I should have double checked that before I sent it to you. And I I would really like an apology from the individual and what steps the individual is going to take to ensure that doesn't happen in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you. Same thing. I tried to limit to three, but I know Jeff's pretty impassioned about those things, and they were important, but I just want to be quick.
As you know, I'm a shine counselor, helping people with Medicare.
Absolutely are.
And as of July first, there's a new regulation that says any veteran who qualifies with a Mass Health program called Buy-In, which pays the Medicare Part B of a hundred and sixty-five dollars a month, any veteran who qualifies, that burden will be transferred to the state and not the veterans, and thus not the town. So that's good news.
Thank you, Gil.
Thank you.
I didn't. I don't think I took the note accurately. So if you want to send me something on that. Is there any more public input?
Candace Graves, ninety Queen Lake Road.
I can. Same same thing.
Yeah, I got I got it. So I just wanted to say, I don't know if it's gonna happen on Saturday night, but I just wanted to tell you, we have movie in the park, The Parks and Rec. We're showing the movie Monsters, Inc., and if it rains, we're gonna have it on the following Saturday. Gates open at six and movie shows at dusk. The concession stand will be open, and we'll be selling all our food and stuff, and it's cash only.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any more citizen input? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. Okay. Under new business introductions of new employees, Mr. Lamontaine, anything?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
All right, we're gonna move on to appointments. First up, we've got Sean Lampert for Cable TV Advisory Committee. Sean, are you here? Hi, how are you?
Good.
Any questions for Sean? We're pretty familiar with Sean.
Yep. I used to record the meetings three days ago.
How are you?
We are glad to see you back. I would move to appoint Sean Lampert to the Cable TV Advisory Committee for a one-year term expiring on six thirty twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any any further discussion? Hearing none on the appointment for Sean Lampert to Cable TV Advisory, how would you vote? Matt?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you, Sean. Welcome back aboard. Hey, Kristoff Chartier, Conservation Commission. Okay, not here. Entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Kristoff Chartier to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term expiring on six thirty twenty twenty-six. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion for Kristoff Chartier to Conservation Commission for a three-year term. How do you vote, Matt?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Victor Toscano?
Yes.
Hi, Victor.
Hi.
Hi, Victor.
Hi.
I we got your community interest form, and I noticed on it that you had you had a couple of lists on there, you know, you know, I very much appreciate what statement you had at the bottom, and I accept the offer and I'll do my best to be an asset. You're already at the Senior Center, correct?
Yeah, I'm a volunteer there.
That that is fantastic. So from your list, I would love to be able to make a recommendation for an appointment contention on a nomination from the Council on Aging for you to for that for you to serve in that capacity. So I would move to appoint Victor, Victor Toscano to the Council on Aging for a two-year term expiring on six thirty twenty twenty-five, subject to a positive nomination from the Council on Aging.
Second.
I'm sorry, three-year term, twenty twenty-six. Thank you, Mr. TA. Do you second that amendment?
I do.
Okay. All right, any discussion?
Mr. Chair? Go ahead. I just wanted to know Victor volunteered for roughly a year now, and I've only hear positive things. He's working on the kitchen over there. So I just wanted to know if that.
Fantastic. Yeah, I think that we continue in that capacity. Any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion to appoint Victor Toscano to the Council on Aging for a three-year term expiring on six thirty twenty twenty-six, subject to a positive nomination from the Council on Aging, how would you vote, Matt?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you, Victor.
Yep, yes, that's saying. Thank you.
It does, but on his community interest form, I think, yeah. Yep. So on the agenda, that's how it appears, because it's the first thing on there. Yep. And James Duty, Council on Aging? Hi, James. Thank you very much for being here. All right, I would like to I move to appoint James Duty to the Council on Aging for a three-year term expiring on six thirty twenty twenty-six.
Seconded.
A very spirited second. Any any further discussion?
Just the same language of the nomination of the Council on Aging.
Okay, just all right. I amend my I amend my motion to expire on six thirty twenty twenty-six, subject to a positive nomination from the Council on Aging.
Thank you for second as amended.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All right, hearing hearing none on the motion to appoint James Duty to the Council on Aging for a three-year term expiring six thirty twenty twenty-six, subject to a positive nomination from the COA. How would you vote, Matt?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we are to our item C, which is our public hearing. I would entertain a moment to open the Continued Dangerous Dog Hearing for Mass General Law, Chapter One for Forty, Section One Forty-Six.
Second at motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any any discussion? Or questions? Nope, okay. On the motion to enter into a public hearing for the Dangerous Dog Hearing continuation, how do you vote, Matt?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. We are in we are in public hearing as of six fifty-two. All right, this is a continuation hearing of the Select Board. Julie has previously refused herself in prior meeting. This is a hearing of the Select Board, or continuation of the hearing of the Select Board, held pursuant to General Laws, Chapter One Forty, subsection one fifty-seven, in Chapter fourteen dot six dot seven of the town's general bylaws for the purpose of determining whether the dog named Bo, the O, of Forty Baptist Common Road, Templeton, Massachusetts, zero one four five eight, is a nuisance or dangerous dog, and to determine the appropriate remedial action to be taken. In our last hearing, we collected a lot of testimony, and we had the following statements and materials offered. We had testimony from Janet Haley, the complainant. Statement of Ann McDonough, that was a red statement by Janet that was edited admitted as evidence. Denise Sarati, Scott McCoo, Lisa Bassel. Could I further clarify where did Lisa go? Oh, there you are. Lisa, are you? Is it also as known as Lisa Higgins?
I've never changed my name, believe it.
Okay.
Yeah.
But also known as would be a good way, because some of the materials that we read through it. Okay. All right, Lisa Bassel, also known as Lisa Higgins, for the purpose of this hearing. Nicole Branchflower, Amanda Bassel, a statement of Peter Sala, statement of Crystal Duchesne, Julie Richard, the recruit recused board member, Alicia McCoo, Susan Kawaleski, Cassandra Tomins. Are they here tonight? Okay. Hi, ladies. Chloe Teigen, and that's the end of my list. I think there was a question out there from somebody, but I did not enter that as evidence. The materials that have been previously previously offered are Mrs. Haley's letter, Mrs. McDonough's letter, Lisa Bassel's letter of support. We didn't have copies of them, or at least weren't first furnished of them, but we had the videos, so we could read back through the ones that you read. Okay. We were able to, at least we had the the video. Okay. Lisa, Lisa and Amanda Bassel's picture of dogs. The Animal Control Officer's list of recommendations, which we do not, I do not have. So if if we if if there's an ability to get a copy of those for this hearing, that would be beneficial. It'll be most beneficial for the period afterward for the deliberation. The Winchendon ACO complaints, there were four of those. The Templeton Police Dispatch records, eight of those. Templeton's Massachusetts Notice of Violation of Ordinance or Regulation, three of those. Wachusett Animal Hospital Medical Info from Jay Haley, John, it's John, right? Jay Haley? Yep. But I think your husband was listed on on the document, so I had it as Jay Haley. There were seven of those. Massachusetts Trial Court Electronic Case Access, that is photos of the injured dog. And finally, Trial Court of Massachusetts Small Claims Session Judgment for Plaintiff, February twenty twenty-three. As I told the board, I was also able to get a full transcript from the YouTube proceeding, so everyone had a written copy of what was said, as well as we had the video copy, so we could refer back through. So this this evening's hearing is a continuance. It's a continuance because the board felt that they didn't. They still did not have enough evidence or did not have the sufficient time to review the evidence. So that is the reason for the continuance this evening. We're not calling people out just just because, you know, we we felt like talking about it again. There was definitely a reason for that. So at this time, is there any further? I don't need additional testimony. If you've already testified, we have that record. If there is additional testimony being offered this evening, I I would ask, do I have hands up of who is going to offer additional testimony, not the the same testimony? One, two, three, four, five, both? Five? Did I count you? Hands up again, please. One, two, three, four, five? Gentlemen. Six. Could you all just just stand up with me? If you're gonna offer testimony, I've got to swear you in. Okay, so if you'll please raise your right hand. I state your name. Pledge to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God. All right, you are now sworn. This is now sworn testimony. I don't. Before I offered complainant and then defendant, I have no such as long as you're being clear who you are speaking on behalf of, I can take the one at a time to, you know, just kind of speed this along. So yes, thank you, Cassandra.
So, yeah, I'm Cassandra Tompkins, Templeton Animal Control Officer. And I know that it's the continuance, and I just kind of wanted to hope that we could go right to the point, discuss the temper of a dog, and that's all fine and dandy, but the fact is that the dog's violating Templeton bylaw. I believe it's bylaw chapter one thirty-three dash four, running at large. It's going off the property. Maybe a great dog on the property, but that's not the issue. We're talking about him getting loose and intimidating, harassing, and it even coming in contact with.
Hang on, second point of order. I I I I'm a point of order. This has been this testimony was made at our last here at the at the beginning of the hearing.
Oh, okay.
Back in the back at our last meeting. Please, we would ask if you're if you are coming up to repeat testimony, we request you, please do not do so. We've already been given that testimony, and we have it on record.
Okay.
If you are going to give new testimony, something that we have not heard yet, then we'd ask you to please come forward.
Okay.
Do you have the recommendations with you?
I do. I have the letter. Yeah.
Are we able to make a copy of?
Yeah.
So that can be distributed to the board. Again, the the recommendations may not may not be a salient point of of it's not testimony. A recommendation isn't going to be testimony, but it may be helpful in deliberation after the hearing is over.
Okay, so.
I know that.
And I apologize, sir.
That's right.
Yeah, it wasn't it wasn't a dig. It was basically saying we we have testimony. At this point, we're just looking for anything new if you were.
To the point, it's about the dog being off the property.
Yep.
We want to keep the dog safe. So he doesn't get hit by a car. We want to keep the people safe that are walking by.
Okay.
That's what we're about. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I don't know how to raise my hand or or cut in politely on this.
I thought you knew the rules. Come on.
But I do, I just want to point out that that chapter one thirty-three is the correct bylaw reference here, so I apologize if I.
No, that's that's fine. I I definitely, we've had time to review that. I know that um Terry had brought that up, making sure that the board understood that there were bylaw concerns with it as well, and we had guidance. I I think the confusion really was, we had such good guidance from Town Council, I'm not pandering, Ryan, but we had really good guidance to be able to run this process. It's very emotional, so we had to make sure that the process was being felt followed, but yes, we do have bylaws and that's what those instructions were created with. Um, I'll take the next witness, please. Yep, come on up. Thank you.
You know, I want to make it short like she did.
Just a name and address.
Janet Haley, three twenty-five Baldwinville Road. Um, yeah, let me see here. I said, yeah, I would like to make a comment at this time that I believe designating Miss Basso's dogs as dangerous is beneficial for all parties concerned and hope the Board of Selectmen took this into consideration when making their decision. This designation will not only benefit the neighbors that walk Baptist Common Road, whether alone or with dogs, but also will be beneficial to Miss Basso and the town's animal control officer. By designating her dogs as dangerous, Miss Basso will have to restrain her dogs on her property, which will eliminate the fear of individuals and dogs being intimidated or attacked.
Janet, a similar point of order. So I want to explain it for the rest. Anyone has additional testimony tonight? This is the hearing where we're collecting information. You, Cassandra, have offered observation and you're trying to help along what the deliberation is going to be. The sooner we we finish the hearing and collect all the information, we are going to deliberate at at what with whatever it takes tonight or needs to be afterwards. That is the part, that is, that's where you would offer that kind of information. What you're trying to do is some make offer a summation of the of the evidence to be able to say, this is what you should do and here's what the effects are.
Well, I wasn't saying what to do.
Yep, but it's not new information. You're you're putting things that we've heard together. But go ahead and continue. Just use that as your guide.
This, I was just saying it benefits all three of us, and this turn also benefits Miss Basso, and then it will eliminate the potential of her dogs being hit or run over by passing cars if they become loose. At last month's meeting, Miss Basso reported she did lose a dog to a hit and run at one time, which I am sure was not an easy loss for either her or our children. And in my opinion, this will also benefit the town's animal control officer because it will give them more authority to seize Miss Basso's dogs and take them away from her part property if they do become loose. Okay.
I I am curious. I don't recall that that piece of information of of Miss Miss Mrs. Basso losing a dog to a.
I remember it.
Yeah.
It was part of her. It was, I remembered. It was part of her original testimony.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was part of her original testimony. I remember.
Please, yeah, bring. Thank you. All right, Janet. Thank you very much.
I may?
Yep.
Donna Balger?
Yep, just where wherever you're from. You don't need street address, but just.
Clear Path for Veterans in Devens, Mass.
Okay.
And we heard about the hearing in August ninth. Somebody came to our organization. We are a veteran veteran service organization and we do train service dogs located in Devens and indicated that there had been a hearing about one of our service dogs. And so we reviewed the hearing and have to say that Lisa Basso is not one of our service dog clients, and to our knowledge, we have never trained her dog. Um, I know she produced a certificate, a service dog certificate, which we asked for a copy of. Um, it does not indicate that it was Clear Path, but it was represented that way in the meeting, and so we had a concern about that and I. So I'm here really to confirm that we did not issue that certificate and that we have not trained that dog.
Okay.
And if somebody trained the dog representing themselves as Clear Path, we'd like to know about that. So Lisa Basso did contact us with some interest in the service dog program in September. We reached out to her, but we did not hear back from her. So that is our knowledge of Lisa and
Okay.
I've not seen her done.
Okay, sir, do you have?
So my name is Nick NATO, Clear Path for Veterans New England. I'm the director of the Service Dog Program. Uh, so the, this here is the requested information dated back September thirteen, oh, sorry. September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, that we have received information request. We have been seeing on the log here, September twenty-two thousand twenty-two, the task was formed. I put in a log saying that I contacted her and there it was no response, no all that.
It is Salesforce software?
Yes.
I'm familiar. Get your name spelled right. Want to guess what I spelled it as?
Yeah, N I C H.
N A T T O.
No, N A D E A U.
Do you mind spelling your name?
Yeah.
B U L G E R, Donna Balger.
Yes, I will allow rebuttal.
I said that I went down there. I never said that he graduated. No, I never planned that he graduated.
Yep, not a conversation, just rebuttal. Yep, okay, thank you. Yep, do you want to come up now?
Um.
Judy?
I'm sorry about the the miscommunication, the the confusion here.
Yep, this way.
Sorry, yeah. Um, I never said that he graduated from Clear Path. I said that I went down there. And that I was I was.
Okay.
Yeah. But it says clearly on the statement where he got the certification, or not the statement, the certification where he got it from.
Not on this one?
Yes.
Okay, but but not Clear Path for Veterans?
No.
Okay.
No.
I understand.
And as far as anything else is concerned, my dogs, since our last our last meeting, there hasn't been an issue with anybody or anything as far as my dogs are concerned.
Okay.
And we've changed the way we're doing.
Can you, yeah, could you, I I mean, I don't want to lead the witnesses, they say, but could you please describe that if if you had had no if you have had no incidents?
No one's. As far as the dogs running in the road or or anything, ACO having to show up? There's been nothing.
Can the ACOS corroborate that?
The last incident is six twenty.
So three months ago.
No incidents since the hearing. Anything else, ma'am?
That's it for now, I guess.
Thank you. I'll call the next to testify. New information that makes sense, ma'am?
Yes, I'm Denise Sarati. Um, I just want to say that I brought down a few pictures the other day of my dog's injury.
Okay.
From that and left it with. Okay, yeah, Jackie, I think it was Jackie, yeah. And I I apologize, I just got them down here recently, so hopefully the pictures came through.
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Read those. This is. Call the next. Yes, ma'am.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Susan Cochran. I live in Baldwinville on Walnut Street. And I just wanted to put my two cents in. I stopped over Lisa Basso's house yesterday with my husband, and we were there probably about two hours, socializing in the driveway, and the dog was out there with us. During that time, I witnessed two young girls walk by. The dog didn't even notice. I watched a guy go by on roller blades with a dog on a leash. Dogs sat right next to us, watched him go by. Didn't move. Nobody talked to the dog. Nobody restrained the dog. He just sat next to us and watched it all happen. And then, just as dusk happened, there was another dog that went to go by and Bo didn't notice. Not at all. Dog didn't leave the yard, didn't go to the end of the driveway, didn't anything. So I just thought I'd let you all know.
Okay.
What I saw yesterday.
I have a follow-up question. Were you or Vassos with the dog the entire time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dog was accompanied and supervised?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we didn't have him on a leash. She just sat right next to our feet and chased the kids around.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, if if the board, if you have a question, I'm sorry if I'm moving too fast. Any other questions from Mrs. Cochran? With a knee? Cochran with a knee?
No.
No.
No, we.
Got it. All right, thank you, Susan.
Thanks.
Any other testimony? Any questions from the board about prior testimony? Or testimony given today or materials given? I want to pause and let you guys think about that. Is there anything that you have?
I have a question for the animal control. Has there ever been any other incidences besides the Basso dogs on Baldwinville Road, on Baptist Common Road? Has there any been any other incidences?
We've no.
Could you?
No, just, no, just any other incidences.
On Baptist Commons? I can't, I wouldn't.
Right. Without having, without being able to research it, yeah. Makes sense.
None. Okay, Tim is none now. Terry? You're good. Okay, I I have everything I need as well. I think that we can I would entertain a motion to Ryan, any other considerations before I close the the hearing?
Um, no, I I think that if you feel you've got all the evidence, yeah, I don't I don't have anything else to add.
Okay.
I do have a little question. Sorry, I just want to be thorough, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, Mrs. Haley, but you understand the difference between dangerous dog and nuisance dog? Okay, just one question. Thank you.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved. So seconded.
Okay, motion and seconded. Any further discussion on the decision to close the hearing? Hearing none on the the motion to close the dangerous dog hearing per Mass General Law one forty section, chapter one forty, section one forty-six. How do you vote, Matt?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. We are out of hearing as of seven fourteen. Okay. Um, the board. The board has instructions, Town Council prepared instructions. Um, I did break it down to them just to make sure that we were collecting all the right information that we were considering the the information. We are now, our job now is to determine whether to find the dog to be a dangerous dog, to find the dog, Bo, this is Bo, this is not about any other dog. This is what was brought forward in the complaint. To find the dog to be a nuisance dog or dismiss the complaint if this finding is unsupported. Uh, Town Council has given us the legal standards for a nuisance dog and or a dangerous dog, give us both. And the available remedies that the board may order. I will, I will highlight for I forgot who was talking about bylaws this morning. The remedies are in accordance with the town of Templeton bylaws, okay? A lot about restraint, a lot about fine, and then other considerations if those can't be fixed. Okay, if we choose to dismiss, that is the end. We will need to statewide, we have deemed this dismissible. If we choose either dangerous or nuisance dog, we must discuss remedies or orders to the dog owner. Um, there are several that were outlined to us in Town Council's packet, but I want to state, folk, I would like to, as a board, stay focused on protection and prevention. Um, we should be prepared to do two two things. Make a decision on that and then discuss a path forward. This evening, I think it is achievable to make up our mind or to act as a board to decide of those three options. And then, basically, we need to give a way forward on the on the evidence that supported that, that guided guided us in that decision. And then we will, Ryan, I wanted to then take that information and then prepare the order, which we would then offer the order in a subsequent meeting, probably the the very next meeting, which is September, September.
Twenty-seven?
September twenty-seventh. So we would have a decision tonight, and then we would have a prepared order if so. If so, ordered by the board, prepared for the next meeting. Does that sound like a plan?
That's right.
Okay. Okay, let's deliberate. I have seen evidence of a injured animal. It is clear between nuisance and dangerous that there was physical harm to a dog. So I I am inclined to find the dog is dangerous. And that is my, based on evidence, based on the evidence, based on the fear. There was considerable, I mean, the dog sounds like a great dog. However, as it was pointed out in the hearing, this isn't about, this isn't a dog issue, this is an owner issue. So I'm interested in making sure that we have the right declaration, the right the right level. It's not going to feel right to a lot of people, but it's going to be the right declaration to be able to then make the right preventative measures move going forward. I have no, I have no interest. I I I have every feeling in my body that wants them to keep their dog safely and with the public, and I want to be able to support that, but I I am inclined to vote that the dog is a dangerous dog. You guys can't let me do all the talking.
Well, I can understand the concern, the piece of the puzzle that I cannot wrap my mind around is, yeah, I understand, yes, there was a complaint. We know nothing about the dog that was attacked. And if that dog did indeed provoke being attacked, and that would also be relevant to my making a thorough and informed decision. Having gone through the transcript, I found nothing to that.
No, ma'am, I'm sorry, not yet.
So that's just one piece that I'm still working on.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would also concur with Mr. Tote's comments as well. I have gone through repeatedly the requirements for declaring Bo a dangerous dog. And while in my mind, I believe we have met most of the requirements, that one, which I will read it. The person attacked or threatened by the dog was engaged in teasing, tormenting, battering, assaulting, injuring, or otherwise provoking the dog. Basically, we have to we have to be able to determine that that did not happen. And I do not, in my mind, I do not have testimony such that we can definitively say that did not happen. So that is my hangup right now. Having said that. Having said that, do I certainly believe that this qualifies as a nuisance dog? Yes, 100%. Right. I believe we've met that standard without a problem.
Um, you know, this can be conversational as well, uh, as long as it's civil and please, the audience, it's all us right now. I can open it up, but I, I want to keep it to this. The people that testified that were walking or walking the dog, um, they did not present a threat or some kind of, I know that there was testimony offered, um, that they came on property otherwise, but we're talking about the public way. We're not talking about the after effects of how people reacted to, oh my gosh, this happened or otherwise. The initial event, um, the person walking, the person running, um, I mean, uh, the, the statement of Chloe Teigen, who lives with her mother, but I think that's what it is, of, you know, being afraid to walk by, to not wanting to go down that road. Um, again, physical injury, there wasn't anything offered on, I, I don't recall any, any physical injury of, oh, it's not like a dogfight occurred or otherwise. It was, it was an attack.
Um, and I'm not questioning that.
Like, uh, you know, again, walking by, not, you know, whether the, it was on the property or not, it was still unprovoked, out into a public way. Um, and then that had intimidation afterwards, so.
Right, but the problem is.
I'm, I'm still gonna do the same thing. I, you know, I, I still think restraint and there are remedies to it, but the dog caused harm.
But, and, and, and I don't disagree with that. Problem is, is that the requirement states that the dog, in this case, Ms. Haley's dog cannot have
Can you read that again?
Cannot have been engaged in teasing, tormenting, battering, assaulting, injuring, or otherwise provoking Ms. Vasso's dog. Uh, yeah, um, if you take a look in, um, if you take a look in the, uh, what Mrs., uh, what the, uh, what town council provided to us, they provided us the entire, um, they did provide us the entire listing of the step, well, I looked it up anyways.
I got it. If, if that's what you're referring to.
I looked it, I looked it up anyways and the, it's, um, um, okay, um, in Mirias and Harrington's, uh,
Okay, number three, the person attacked or threatened the dog was engaging in teasing.
Bingo, that's it, yes. That's what I, that's where my question lies.
That's where I'm hung up.
That's where I'm hung up. I, when I look at the remainder of the requirements for a dangerous dog, okay? It states that Mass General Law, chapter 140, section 136A defines a dangerous dog as a dog that either without justification attacks a person or domestic animal causing physical injury or death. Bingo. I believe we have that. Who or to behaves in a manner that is, that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic owned animal. Both in this case, and it's an either or. However, there is an and. Okay? And the and is that the dog cannot have been protecting or defending itself, it off, its offspring, another domestic animal or a person from attack or assault, that's one. The person who was attacked or threatened by the dog could not have been committing a crime upon the person or property of the owner or the keeper of the dog, that's two. We don't have either of those in this case, I don't believe. The person attacked or threatened by the dog was engaging in teasing, tormenting, battering, assaulting, injuring, or otherwise provoking a dog. I don't know that we have that. And the fourth one, at the time of the attack threat, or threat, the person or animal that was attacked or threatened by the dog had in breached an enclosure or structure in which the dog was being kept apart by the public. The dog was on a public way untethered, so that is out. You have to have all, in my, yeah.
In violation of our bylaw.
In my mind, the way that this reads, you must meet all four in order for it to be declared a dangerous dog. And in my mind, I don't have number three.
Are we allowed to use town council during deliberation? Okay, do you want to ask town council?
I'd love, I would love to hear what town council hears.
Or you, you need to meet, go ahead. Ryan, did you understand that it didn't really, wasn't phrased in the form of a question? Sorry, didn't watch Jeopardy tonight.
Yeah, I think, I think I understand, um, what, what you're getting at, so, um, what the statute says is that, um, that the dog can't, you can't say a dog is dangerous if one of these circumstances, um, existed.
That's my interpretation.
I think that was, right, right. So, yeah, again, there has to be an absence of all four of these. Does that?
So to, so just to clarify, Ryan, if any one of those four is in question.
So if it's, if, if, if the, if the board makes a finding that that was happening, that, so focusing on number three, that someone was engaged in teasing or torment or torment.
We don't have that information.
Um, if you, if you, if you don't have that information, um, and you don't feel comfortable making that finding, um, and you don't, you don't have to make specific findings about each of these things, um, but if it's in question and you think that maybe that is a possibility, then you would be precluded from finding it a dangerous dog.
Okay.
This is more about doubt.
Yeah, this is, that's exactly what this is. This is, we always talk about beyond a reasonable doubt.
Okay.
Okay, and in my mind, there is a reasonable doubt.
But I can surmise that you're, um, you're in favor of nuisance.
I am 100, I, I 100% believe that we have met the, that this has met the qualification for nuisance, yes.
And the definition as was provided to us.
Yes. 100% agree with that. That has been met.
Yes, ma'am.
I think the dog is.
It's tough, I know, I'm sorry.
I would say nuisance, I would not say dangerous. I did have other questions, so I did. You know.
You can ask questions of your board members, it's just, there's, we're now, we're now.
Sometimes your response to a situation can either make or break what happens to you and to be fair on both sides of the coin. Um, the women that were attacked, um, I liked what Amanda Basso said about learning how to, you know, help yourself in that instance, because I've been in those situations and I've never gotten bitten, but I've had training. So, um, to be fair on both sides, how you respond to a dog can also, you know, make or break how that dog treats you. So I would like to see Bo a nuisance dog perhaps, because it was, he was off the property, but a dangerous dog, I wouldn't.
Yeah. I understand the conditions, um, that, um, Matt was talking about, but, um, nuisance, you know, what's in a word, nuisance or dangerous? When I, when I read, when I read through nuisance dog, and if, if we had, I, I'm not going to go off of doubt, I'm gonna, I'm gonna trust all the people that came and offered useful testimony or unuseful testimony. I've, I've got to base it on that. I, I, I had enough. I had enough to be able to say that I'm convinced that it caused damage and I don't see any provision in nuisance dog if damaged. I see has threatened or attacked livestock, a domestic animal or a person, but such threat or attack was not a grossly disproportionate react and reaction under all the circumstances. For I had multiple events of the dog running into the street in violation of the Mass General Law, uh, or I'm sorry, uh, in violation of our bylaw. Um, I, I think a designation of dangerous dog is appropriate. You know, um, and what does that do? Ultimately, we've got to come up with remedy. Um, dangerous dog, nuisance, nuisance dog does not prescribe a meth, you know, a, a whole list of, you have to do this, you have to, you know, use bamboo shoots and torch, and, and no, that's not what it's about, it's about prevention. And that's what I'm interested in getting to. I want to be able to get the right. I, I, I've, my personal feeling, based on the testimonial, I want to make sure that we get the right determination and then the right remedies so that people can walk down the road and, and, and in safety and not in fear and that, um, the Bassos can have their dog and, and not worry about, um, that impacting them. I got it, we have to create that, that's our job, that's our job here to create that condition.
Well, I certainly understand and respect your position on that, Mr. Chair. I would say that a dog running into the road is not necessarily dangerous. It is indeed a nuisance and it is indeed violating the bylaw. And even with the, the less restrictive description, you know, the, the fact that there was an attack that is still also spelled out under nuisance, which I'm, I'm inclined to say, just like Mr. Revard, this is where I'm leaning more toward nuisance than dangerous, just based on what I have, because I have the question in my mind and I cannot, beyond a shadow of a doubt, say that emphatically, this is the answer.
I need, I need order in the room. It's, it's, yeah, it's not going to help anything if we have to try and talk over you. It's a tough decision to make.
It is.
So like I said, tonight, yes, go ahead.
Can we go over the difference if Bo is deemed a dangerous dog versus a nuisance dog? What happens to Bo? Because from what I've gathered, this is more of a people issue.
That's correct. That's my, my assessment as well. Um, I, I.
And I don't mean to gaslight any of the ladies and their experiences, so.
So, the remedy is up to us as well. Um, if we choose nuisance, or it sounds like we're going to choose either nuisance or you, you gotta stop that. I, I, you can't, you recused yourself, please. Um, it's, we're going to make a determination, so there will be an order. And like I said, if we make the determination tonight, bring the temperature down a little bit and then work with town council, I'll actually work with town council, um, to be able to produce that order. I want to make sure that we're citing the right evidence. Um, it's because the order requires, requires it. Then again, and thank you for pointing out, Terry, um, our, our bylaws are an excellent framework for the, uh, the order, for the remedies. So, um, if the, if the three board members in favor of nuisance over the one board member who would prefer the, the determination of danger, dangerous, it, it, you know, what, again, what's in a name, ultimate, they don't, you know, you don't, they don't put something on that on the Vassal property, they don't put a, a sign or something like that. It's the remedy, it's the dog order, it's what we wind up furnishing for them and then have a plan to be able to implement and contingency if it does not work. Absolutely.
So to get a feel for Tim and Matt. They're not sure that the dangerous dog title, because it under it says a dog that eat or without justification. Those are the, those two words, without justification is where they're uncertain. They're not sure if there was justification.
But I got from Matt that there was doubt.
Attacks.
The other considerations.
My problem is, it's, my problem is that we don't know if the Haley's dog teased, tormented, battered, assaulted, injured, otherwise provoked the Vassal's dog before the attack.
So what that says is if Bo attacked without justification.
Right.
Was there justification in Bo's attack is what Matt and Tim is saying.
We don't know that, we don't have that.
I am, I am basing it on the testimony that was given, that it was unprovoked, it was people not walking, um, it was dogs, I understand, I have dogs, I have dogs that reacts, one dog reacts well, others, the other doesn't. We don't bring that dog out in front of other dogs. So, you know, I just, that, that's not the basis.
Okay.
But, um, again, I think you guys have got this. I think that there's consensus. I think someone should, unless there's other deliberation or otherwise, it sounds like you guys have made up your mind. So I, I think you should make a motion and then we can continue with the order. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Would any of the board members wish to hear anything from the public? Okay. I, I do, I don't see you for it. Terry, is that all right? I, I know there were several people wanting to get in part of the deliberation, but again, this is very difficult. We're basing it on the evidence given. So a motion is going to be to either find dangerous nuisance or dismiss.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we would find the dog Bo a nuisance dog.
I have a motion.
So seconded.
We have a motion and a second, need further discussion on declaring the dog the result of the, of the dog dangerousness hearing to be, uh, deemed as a nuisance dog. Based on the outcome of this vote, we would then, um, or we can have the discussion in here, I, again, I think, um, however this carries, we need to come up with a preventative measure that is tied to our, our bylaws that is about, um, restraint. And I think we can do this, I would, um, we have the ACOs here as well, we have their recommendations that we can integrate into that. Um, I'm, I want all of the success for, for Lisa and Bo, I want, I want success. Um, but I also want the public protected. So I'm, I'm torn from a remedy perspective on first offense, second offense, third offense, our order, Ryan, our, our order can be specific for this. You know, we can prescribe no first offense, any, 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 any further, uh, issue. You know, this is how we're going to deal with it. Or it can be a first sec, offense, second offense, much like our, our bylaws discuss.
Hmm, that's a good question. So this, the statute is really specific about what you can order for dangerous dogs. And interestingly, there's a bit more leeway in terms of what you order for nuisance dogs. I think the, in terms of saying for a first offense, um, I think that's. Sorry?
Which this is not a first offense.
Right, but if.
It would be after, right.
Defying.
Yeah.
Um, I think that a general, um, maybe warning that you would reconsider the remedies if there was a future offense would be an effective way to, would, would be legal.
Right.
But I think I don't know that with the dangerous dog, um, orders, I, I suppose you could order, choose one of the specified orders and say, this is, this would apply until there's a, a successive offense, in which case these two or these two statutory remedies would apply. So there is a little way to work within the, the dangerous, um, dog remedy, um, it's very prescriptive, the, the, the statute, but there, there are ways you can sort of work a little bit within that.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm, yeah, I suppose I'm true to treating it, uh, the, our bylaw a little bit like a, an à la carte that to basically pick from, like, I'm interested in protecting, but I also, I, I want to be reasonable as well, um. You know, I, I'm, I'm for restraint, I'm for, uh, a fine. And then I'm for, um, you know, if they cannot, um, I can't believe all that.
These are just more.
Before, before, before you look at those, can you turn those over? Um, so Ryan, we were just, it was discussed in the hearing, uh, photos, additional photos of um, Serati, Mrs. Serati's dog, it was mentioned during the hearing and we were, now we're out of the hearing and we were just handed the photos, can we use those?
Had, so you hadn't seen the photos before?
We had not, and we closed the hearing. We had not, and we closed the hearing.
I would probably they were mentioned. Um, I I guess I would say you you probably shouldn't consider the photos themselves, but you can say assign credibility to the fact that there were photos taken to the extent that you want to.
Right, thank you for that. So again, this is, we're in discussion of the the nuisance part, but I'm I'm also thinking forward to a offense, a fine. And then I had had um you know, violation of nuisance dog or dog owners uh against, you know, it could be taken to district court for that. Um, and then, you know, if they, if they could not handle the dog, if they could not restrain the dog even after a fine, I would even um have provision that the dog would be uh be removed. Uh, meaning not removed to another community, but uh taken by in uh animal control for rehoming. Okay. We're we're still in discussion of a new
I'm just a little I'm just a little concerned with the word guess. I guess, I just want to know for sure. Since we have a lot of people that watch and ask us to go by the book.
Yeah, what what are you referring to?
Um, I guess you can't use because we're out of the hearing. Ryan mentioned she guesses. That word guess. Yes.
Well, I mean, I I just, I mean, I just dropped it on her in in the interest of making sure that we're going by the, it's it was mentioned, it uh we're still in deliberation, Ryan, if you want to think, think on it for a second.
Is there anything you can look up?
It was mentioned in the hearing, but it was not given to us until after.
So I I I'm sorry for the use of those words.
Just trip me up.
Was just, just thinking out loud a bit, but no, I I wouldn't advise using the evidence that you received after the evidentiary portion of the hearing was closed.
They were not dropped off physically. They were forwarded in an email, very difficult. Ryan, these were, these were submitted to us two days ago via email. And they were mentioned in the meeting, just so you have that full information.
All right, let's continue deliberation on um declaring Bo a nuisance dog. Anything further? Hearing nothing further. On the motion to declare uh Bo uh dog belonging to Mrs. Ba- uh Mrs. Lisa Baso a nuisance dog. How would you vote?
Matt? Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
I vote no. Bo is now declared a nuisance dog. Hey, um, the next steps would would are to come up with a dog order appropriate for uh Bo and um Lisa Baso. Is that um the preparation of that order? Do I have any guidance from the board? I can, I can prepare it with you, Ryan. Um, because we're basing it on evidence and then we would offer that order for vote in our next meeting. To basically make sure that the order is certified by the board. Is there any uh left or right guided guidance that the board wants to give me this at this time? Um, remedies or otherwise, and did, you know, did you um agree with um a progressive approach to leading, ending with removal of the dog? Uh, rehoming of the dog?
Um, I'd be careful with rehoming um for the sole reason that I don't see anything within the MGL that um allows us to do so. So just be careful with that. Um. What I will say is that I do agree with the progressive approach in that um, we should at least start with the dog must be restrained at all times. Whether it be on the property by, whether it be on the property and the method of restraint can be decided, it can be, you know, that can be decided. And absolutely went off.
I would like to make a motion um i- i- for an immediate determina- uh in an interim order that the dog uh dog Bo be restrained at every point le- uh leaving the domicile is to such time that we can get a full order.
So moved.
Okay. Uh, second, okay. We have a motion in a second. Uh, basically what this would do, Lisa, is you got to keep the dog on a leash. We're going to give you an order that says that anyway, for restraint, but we're going to give you interim guidance to follow the bylaw. Dog's got to be restrained when it leaves your house. By leash, by tether, or otherwise. You don't have a phys- uh, this is a question for you. You don't have a physical barrier at the roadway right now, correct? Okay, so in the interim of that, and and we come up with this order, um, the board is about, the board is about to give you some interim uh guidance or an interim order until we can get the full order. Again, it it's, it sucks to be on this side of it. I I get it, but it also for the people who are are were afraid and had things happen, you know, that we've got to come to an agreement. And this is the way to move forward, so you can continue to enjoy Bo. Any, any for, so that was, so that was clarification. Anything else on the immediate interim order?
We just, I just want to make sure we we have it correct. I that I I move that as an interim control before the formal order is issued that the dog Bo must be restrained at all times when outside of the Basso home.
In accordance with the Templeton.
In a, yeah, including on the property in accordance with the Templeton bylaws. Is that?
Yeah, and if that, if that constitutes an amendment or a clarification.
I don't, I don't think, I think it's just, I think it's just clarifying, I think it's just making sure that we may have the the motion detailed.
It's not incomplete. It's not incomplete and to the bylaw, the bylaw says a dog's allowed to run free on their property. So if we're going to cite the bylaw, the bylaw doesn't say that completely. So it does, I wouldn't cite the bylaw, I would say what you want and leave the bylaw.
Pull that out then, and then it then it should be, yeah, so then it should be, right, then it should, then the motion should be that I move that in the inter- as an interim control until a formal order can be issued that the Basso's dog Bo must be restrained at all times when outside of the physical building of forty Baptist Common Road.
Okay, and it's been seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would just to piggyback on Mr. Revard, that we have language in the bylaw that that specifically addresses running at large and when it is off property. Anytime it's on a public way or off of the physical owner's property is when this really becomes the requirement to have.
This is interim.
You, this is, right, I specifically said in the mention that this is an interim control until the formal order is is, is uh is issued.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that, man. Any further discussion? Hearing none on the interim order, how do you vote, Matt?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Um, if you have any questions about that, that was clear. That was clear.
I know, I'm by an adult. Because there are children, you said restrained by um, an adult.
Does that, does that make sense, Lisa? Okay. Okay. Um, but if there's any clarification on it, please work with the ACOs that that's spelled out that, but that's a, that's a great um point.
We can amend the previous motion.
Um, just to make another motion to add on.
Make a motion to add on to the order that the dog must be restrained by an adult.
Eighteen years old.
Of eighteen years or older.
Okay, motion? That's a motion. Second?
I moved it, so again.
Yep.
Okay, you just seconded, okay. Sorry.
Motion and second and
Got a question. How old are you all this time?
Any further discussion? On the, on the addition to the um interim um interim order for Bo and uh owners, um Lisa Ba- uh the Bassos. How would you vote, Matt?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Okay, we will prepare, um, we will prepare the dog, uh we will prepare the dog order and then at the um if you could be at the next meeting, um, that would be beneficial. If uh ladies, either one, if you want to be there, um, we have your recommendations in terms of the preparation of the dog order, but we'll have it ready to go. Okay, anything I might have left out, Ryan?
No, I think that that is what we need. I think I have the the guidance um for us to work on preparing that order.
Okay. All right. Um, thank you. That basically closes our business tonight with um the 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 dog hearing, won't even mention it. So thank you for all that have uh participated. Um, that was a tough one.
That's a block, yeah.
Okay, we're going to move on.
Have a good night.
Okay, you too, Ryan. And that, Ryan. Say again. Basically, it's got to be restrained if if you need, if, but if you need it in writing, we can definitely provide it to you. Run it. That's okay. I'm going to, uh, motion for a five minute recess. Motion for a five minute recess has been made.
So seconded.
All right, second, all in favor of five minute recess, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five minute recess. I'll take care of it. I'll take care of it. All in favor of five minute recess, say aye.
Mister Chairman, I moved to approve a one day all alcohol license to the Templeton Fishing Game.
Second up motion.
Got a motion in a second, any? Any deliberation? Any questions for John?
Gonna be some good bands.
I do see the advertisements, thank you for that.
I bought tickets already.
Great.
See you there.
And so. All right, hearing nothing further on the motion to approve a one day, uh, alcohol license for Templeton Fishing Game. Uh, how would you vote?
Yeah, yes.
Carrie.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Yes, as well. Thanks for hanging in there, John. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
We are at item D, that is going to be a presentation of our fourth quarter FY twenty three quarter, um, public safety report. And let's see. Packet, that is, who is first?
Chief Dickie.
All right. Hey, chief.
Good evening, chief.
And so, fourth quarter for last fiscal year. With three hundred and sixty two emergency calls. Uh, which are listed down below. And sixty three residential and commercial inspections during that quarter. Um, during the third quarter, we had one of our full time firefighter paramedics resign, which we then did fill that position. Um, during the fourth quarter. And then unfortunately, during the fourth quarter, we had another one of our full time firefighter paramedics resign. Um, which we are in the process of filling right now, uh, hopefully, um, meeting with a candidate for a second interview tomorrow, which will hopefully fill that position.
Um.
Fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed. Um, so the, the main reason that the, the two people that left in third and fourth quarters have given is they, um, is because of pay and staffing. The pay out there, especially in private sector is just ridiculous right now for paramedics and they can go anywhere. And they're going outside of fire service is what they're doing in the private sector and making almost getting whatever they want to make for, for money at that time. And then for the staffing is where we've been working very diligently over the years, first with Carter and, uh, currently without them on getting department where it needs to be, but we're still, we are just at, you know, most days of the week, we have two firefighter paramedics on full time, but when they have what's called a Kelly Day, their day off. Um, we lose one of them and it's usually a, a, a basic EMT. Uh, maybe not even a fire experience that picks that up. So we're kind of short staffed. Leaving more on to them to do so. And then even with, when it's just the two of them. Most departments that are in communities our size are moving away from two on a shift to three on a shift. Uh, with three on a shift, twenty four hours a day, and sometimes even with extra day personnel besides that. So we're we're, we're fighting an uphill battle at right now with staffing, but we're doing the best we can. Uh, but again, like I said, I have somebody meeting with tomorrow and if I get this person, he comes fully trained. So that'll be really good.
Any questions for the chief?
It's, uh, Monday was pretty crazy. I, I, I know, I had my, um, that, that scanner app on. And, uh, it was, I don't know how many mutual aids I, I heard, but I was, I thought Templeton's coming next or some, something.
Uh, so we were very lucky when it came to that. Um, I mean, number one, our community didn't get hit as hard as anybody else. But the way our mutual aid system goes, they don't pull from every department around them. So we did not have to go out to Lemonster or Pittsburgh or anywhere like that. Unfortunately, other communities in the area didn't get hit hard as well, so we didn't have to move up and help take care of any of them. So we were very lucky with that, but we, so.
Thanks, chief. There are no questions, so we'll move along.
Thanks.
Thanks, chief. Turn hall, we're ready for Templeton Police. Love the start. Where did the FY twenty three year ago? Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Letter from Chief Bennett. Fourth quarter report FY twenty three. Where did the FY twenty three fourth quarter go? There's a blur from April first to the end of June. However, once a town voted on a balanced budget for FY twenty four at the annual town meeting, the focus on the command staff and officers was a continued positive progression for our department. Station projects. The HVAC system continues to be a thorn in the side of the station and the town. The project was sent out to bid, which received only one bid at a sum larger than the available funds. The project was sent to bid a second time after securing enough funds for the project. No bids are received this time around. The project is now going out for a third time, and let us hope that the third time is the charm. As a result of the cruiser replacement program and switch to Aiken Automotive Service, this year there was a significant reduction in cruiser maintenance. We started the fiscal year with twenty five thousand for cruiser maintenance and had a balance of nine thousand ninety eight dollars and seventy five cents as of May first, twenty twenty three. This will not be true for every year going forward, but is an indication that the progress in place works. The command staff has been awarded the trilogy uh, award by the FBI leader. In recognition of the Templeton Police Department, Police Department's dedication to law enforcement leadership as demonstrated by all command staff completing the FBI leader trilogy series. The trilogy series consists of the Supervisor Leadership Institute, Command Leadership Institute, and Executive Leadership Institute, which is an intense forty hour course with a specialized field.
Each one, it says each isn't intense, so that's three forty hour course.
That is correct.
Just wanted to. That's a long time.
It is. Quite an accomplishment, yeah. The department activity analysis from April first, twenty twenty three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Uh, so going from, uh, I'll, I'll read them down and across, but, uh, going down, it's gonna be the third quarter first and then the fourth quarter. So the ACO, there was seventy three. And then for the fourth, it was one oh six. Arrests were twelve. And then eleven in the fourth. Assist other agency was sixty five. And then went forty eight in the fourth. Accident, uh, excuse me, incident investigations is ninety seven. And it went to one thirty in the fourth. Restraining orders of seventeen and then nineteen. Parking tickets were one and then one. Motor vehicle citations were seventy six and then ninety nine. Motor vehicle accidents were twenty three and then twenty seven. FID slash licensed carries were issued were sixty two and then went to sixty five. And police calls for service were three thousand five hundred and thirty five. And in the fourth quarter went to three thousand six hundred and sixty nine. Total calls to dispatch were five thousand one hundred and seventy nine. And in the fourth quarter is five thousand three hundred and fifty five. Respectively. Chief Michael Bennett. Thanks, turn hall. A quick question about the FID and license carry issued. Are those, um, do you know? To your knowledge, is that, uh, renew, does that include renewals, like all actions?
Beginning of the meeting, I believe you said three minutes and. So yeah, it's both. Uh, Chief, Chief Bennett does the licensed carries and, uh, it is renewals and it is also brand new.
Okay.
So it is both, yeah.
It's human.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for turn hall?
No.
Congratulations to everybody on their accomplishments.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I had one quick question. The motor vehicle accidents, so we jumped up by, that seems like a little bit a lot. Four in one quarter. You went from twenty three to twenty seven? Are they in any particular area of town or are they all over the rest? Like if they're a dangerous area where we should be watching or?
Yes. You get the same answer.
We own one. I, I was just curious. Like is this Templeton, is it the Rotary Project, is it?
I can't say specifically. Uh, the only thing I would say is the more popular roads, more accidents, uh, you know, obviously backroads.
They're just getting heavier with traffic and everything else.
Okay, same thing with, uh, weather conditions, you know, obviously winter, generally speaking, more than the summer, you know, but nothing specifically, I can't say one road, uh.
Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Final for public safety is emergency management.
Oh.
I'm sorry, Rick.
I made that error. My three minutes are up. Okay. Um, during the third quarter.
Hi, Rich.
How you doing?
Hi, Rich.
Hi, Rich.
I'm doing good. Um, during the third quarter, we, we were working on a grant to purchase, um, stop the bleed trading supplies. We did that and we've had, I think, three classes of stop the bleed since then.
Wow.
Trained about fifty people, I think, so far. Um, so we received the stop the bleed training supplies and we're still working with that. Uh, attended a virtual quarterly MD meeting. We sent the paperwork into Mema for the grant to update the town's hazard mitigation plan. Couple of weeks later, the signed contract and notice to proceed was received. Don Moran and I met with Trevor Fletcher at Graves. We actually did a walk around the pond over there at Graves Pond. Um, I'm imagining he's gonna be addressing the board pretty soon about his plans. He's actually trying to follow the state's guidelines on dams, so he's doing quite a bit of work over there, clearing out a lot of the vegetation and getting it ready, goes on. Due to the annual town meeting preparations for, uh, getting the vendors, get the letter, the bids out for vendors to update our hazard mitigation plan got kind of delayed a little bit, so we were a little behind to start with that grant program, but it's in full swing now. Um, we had, uh, we've joined that regional RE, uh, REPC, the Regional Emergency Planning Committee, along with several other towns. And the meeting scheduled for the summer was canceled, but they did, Mema did do a training for us. Um, tabletop exercise. And Chief Bennett, Lori Weida, Chris Cassavent, Peter Layton, and, uh, Don Moran and I were in attendance from Templeton and there were four towns involved. It was Phillips and Gardner, Athol and Templeton. So, uh, that's, it's working anyway, we're getting things done. And I sent in the reimbursement for the twenty twenty two EMPG grant, which was that um, stop the bleed training supplies. I hadn't heard anything for a while, so I called them because it was getting toward the end of the fiscal year. And it's a good thing I called because they hadn't received it yet in the office that it was concerned that it never got forwarded. Uh, Mema's fault, not ours, but, uh, I resent it so that they had it and she promised she would try to get it paid by the end of the fiscal year. I don't know if that happened or not, but it was supposed to. Uh, we attended a meeting at the Temple Light Office concerning the Main Street out of River Bridge project. Three, the three vendors that were sent bids requests were, uh, Jamie Kaplan Consulting, Time Bond and MRPC for that hazard mitigation and, uh, hazard mitigation plan update. Uh, three of us from emergency management, uh, applied to attend a FEMA two day training up in Montpelier, Vermont on unoccupied aircraft systems. Uh, that course filled up so quick. Um, none of us were chosen for that, so. Uh, Don Moran did a facelift on the garage doors of our building, so it looks a lot nicer down there. Instead of that white rusty ancient look. And we had three cert meetings that quarter and I had to send, I have to send in a quarterly report to Mema on this hazard mitigation plan update project that we're doing. Right now, they're expecting this thing to take two years plus, uh, I've the ones I've done in the past never lasted that long, but whatever, we'll, we'll get this done. But I have to send in a quarter report. The first one showed that we were about a month behind. And with an explanation that we started off slow. And with an explanation that we started off slow, so it's uh we're catching up quick right now. We still might be a little behind by the time I send the next one in at the end of this month. We'll have to wait and see. Uh we received a request from the Parks and Recs Department to conduct CPR AED training for some of the coordinators. Uh just to let you know, nobody ever contacted me again about that, and we never did the training, so I don't know what happened there. Uh send out, sent out a request for bids to four vendors for the purchases uh of our UTV for emergency manager insert. And uh that'll be on the next one, but we did four wheeler. Yes, okay. We could purchase it and.
Rich, you you um went over one, uh the tabletop tabletop exercise at the Gardner PD.
Well, I I went from up here to down there.
Okay.
I mentioned that one.
You discussed it.
Oh, sorry. When when is that?
No, no, we did that.
That was good.
Bennett, uh Lori Weida, Chris Cassavent. All right. He laid it on more than and I were in attendance about.
Okay.
What'd you like about it?
Well, it was very, very simple, for one thing. But they made us think about things that we weren't thinking about.
Oh, great.
Of course, they use the scenario that happened basically right in front of our EOC, so it made it almost impossible for us to really do this. But we did it. We did it. We worked it out. So.
Sounds very military. You're down. You're down. You're down.
Basically, that's what they were doing. Right. And but we worked it out. And each table had a Mema representative there. Uh throwing the scenario at you and writing stuff down. So it was all documented. And that's it.
Any questions for Rich? None? No. Great report. Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
Hi, Jackie.
Hi, hi, Jack. Um so for the library and community services, library, the um the last quarter saw a good attendance at Story Hour, the class visits from Templeton Elementary School, and the newly formed stitching group, all three concluded for the summer in June, but they were very successful. We had a uh collection box, food collection box set up from a group called United to Feed of North Central Mass, and there was a generous response from the community to that. Um we had two passes available, DCR Parks and Davis Farmland. They were borrowed eight and four times respectively. Davis Farmland is still um being used this quarter. The DCR parks are free as of Labor Day. Prepared for summer reading incentives, farmers market opened on May twenty-fifth. The exterior trim painting was completed and um I participated in interviews for the Director of Veteran Services. So if you have any questions about the library. Senior services.
I do. I'm sorry, delayed. Um Jeff brought up a lot about um the the food pantry, the next um the next time that I don't, or if we can give it, get like an update or uh an assessment, or if you have any like immediate observations. Um, you know, I definitely appreciate Jeff bringing these things up. You know, he's not all gristle and bone. He's a softie too, and I I definitely heard it in his voice, so I'll make sure that we're, if there's, if he sees something, you know, they say, see something, do, yeah, see something, say something.
Right.
So I I I really felt that from him, so.
Sure.
Okay.
I'll definitely get an update from Michelle.
Roast it online for gristle and bone. Mary, watch out.
Looks better than whale snails and puppy dog tails.
Uh I'd get it. Yeah, exactly.
At the, over at the senior center and a couple of the special events they had that quarter in addition to their usual thing, um dinner theater event, uh a workshop on seventeenth century tools, which they collaborated with the Historical Commission. That was well-attended. Um three meals sponsored by ARPA funds, which your board approved. Um those are always well-attended, and they often are accompanied by music. Uh they had a heart healthy lecture uh by Dr. Chandra and a healthy breakfast, summer barbecue, um a nice trip to the Bridge of Flowers, and the center's roof was replaced, which is amazing. And perfect timing with all the rain we've had this summer. So we are so thankful for that. And then just some statistics there. I should, I think you asked me to track them last time, and I I apologize for not doing that, but more or less in line with what we've been seeing. But I'll make sure I do that next time.
And metrics are key.
Right. Um and then Veteran Services, I didn't ask Michelle Durkey to come here because she she wasn't working during this quarter. She was hired just at the beginning of the.
She she's also just on vacation, I think.
She was, yeah. So um you can look forward to seeing her the next time. I'm sure she'll have a lot of uh great news to report, so.
Look forward to it.
Yeah. Um.
Steve, you want to?
Hi, Steve.
Good evening.
Hello, how are you?
Right. I'll be beat.
This shirt.
Thanks. We like them. And I get to wear advertising, which is nice. I just actually came from a chamber event, so we're able to go there and network and spread out some business cards and get people interested in what we're doing.
Wait, did it happen in fourth quarter?
Oh, sorry. I thought it. That was a long, it was a long, long networking event. All right, that's all right. That was a good point. So actually, um some of you may know, we've been deep into staff development all year. We have several new people that are in training or just getting out of training, and it started Dottie, uh who is here, monitoring the meeting in the room, was hired in March and um really, we got to train her on the meetings and everything else. And I just want to give a shout out to Dottie and Hannah for keeping us running. Yep. And we all know Hannah's a rock with the meetings.
I looked up and they already had the the pause, you know, when we took the recess.
Yeah, and that came as a surprise to us, and I didn't have to say a word.
There you go.
So um they keep everything running, and Dottie's really taking the lead on monitor dot TV and keeping us organized, and that is a challenge often with me. So she's doing a great job with that. Uh we had more hires in May and June. Uh one of the things I want to point out is we noticed that meetings were buffering a lot, you know, on the internet when you're you're not familiar with buffering. And right on cue, Comcast called and said, hey, your service needs upgrading.
Hmm.
And we thought, oh, maybe that's the weak point at our broadcast location in Baldwinville. So the signal goes here to the TV station, the broadcast location in Baldwinville, and then onto YouTube. So we said, well, I don't want to pay for gigabit service, but all right, I guess I have to. And um that wasn't so. They actually wanted to do it the day of town meeting, and I chickened out. And um it was a good move because we couldn't get remote access to the TV station for three days. So we would not have, if we had let them do that on town meeting day, we would not have streamed town meeting that night. Um we're also in, I think it was in May or maybe June, we attended.
I'm asking for, asking for a statistic off the top of your head. How many, when you're streaming on um for annual town meeting, how many do you usually see? You you more than most or much the same?
Yeah, I I would say probably more than what we see here. You know, there may only be a handful of people watching
Yeah.
any given meeting here, but then you'll have fifty by the next couple of days.
Okay.
So in town meeting.
Watches, yeah.
Yeah, I'll I'll keep a better eye on it.
It's just interesting to see, you know, you know, in terms of how the community consumes its government, you know, whether they're coming to these meetings or participating in town meeting. If they didn't have a um, you know, use the term, if they didn't have a dog in the fight for for that, but they still want to participate and find out what's going on. It is interesting to know. And do you have any way of? You know, you always hear about like the Nielsen reports and stuff. I know it's not like someone's looking in the window to see what you're watching, but I don't know. Is there a way to to judge TCTV uh Channel Eight viewership?
No.
No.
I mean, Nielsen would be, you can send out surveys, you know.
Right. We have sixteen people, sixteen people watching right now. I just wonder how many people consume it because it's on television. Yeah. All right. Sorry, sorry.
No, that's quite all right. We attended the Mass Access Conference. Um that's, you know, our kind of trade group, other TV stations in Templeton. It was convenient because it was at uh Great Wolf Lodge. So we didn't have to travel to South Shore or something like that, and they really stressed arts and culture programming, so I followed up with the Cultural Council on that. We already have a good relationship with them. Um and now hopefully we have a better one. Um I I won't go through everything, the events covered. I just want to point out the the a a story from the Easter egg hunt. I don't know if you know this, but uh one of the our cable advisory committee members that we appointed, Gage Pacier, when he first called me, he said, I got interested in what you're doing because I saw somebody at the Easter egg hunt with a camera. And that was Hannah doing her job. And he said, I did not see that in the town where he used to live. So I I like that story.
Yep.
And uh meeting views, I won't go into everything, but YouTube is up, Facebook is up, meeting but views are still up across the board, so I think people are getting more interested in town government. And some of your meetings broke into the top ten. Maybe soon they'll uh that's a good thing. They'll challenge, they'll challenge conquer toys and lanterns.
And I think the talk of toys might be more.
And also I just want to point out with the Facebook post, some of the most uh pop- popular ones are kind of more lifestyle farmers market and summer concerts. And whenever we do pictorials with a bunch of pictures, people eat that up. So happy to do it.
Any questions for Steve? Or TCTV as a whole? All right, hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Well, fine. We're going to finish out with Cultural Council.
So I have Lisa's report. Um the Cultural Council met once in May to review um some twenty twenty-three grants and discuss plans for upcoming events. Um in June, two projects had to be postponed and postponed another time due to rain. Both were rescheduled and to August. Programs receiving Cultural Council grants that did take place included Zelda Fitzgerald at the Senior Center. I went to that. It was great. Um Winchin and Wins Regional Exhibition at Fitchburg Art and Gala and Spring Art Music Festival. And some of the members have been trying to gauge the interest at at their, at the events that they fund, which I think is a great idea.
Yep.
Um and as always, they're happy to welcome new members. Um they, you know, they can always, their member, the members on the board, I think, I think it's twelve or fifteen or something. They never come close to that, so it's always good to have.
She said twenty or.
Um it may have been. It's a huge number, and they they never come close to that, so they're always looking for new people, so. That's all Lisa sent.
Thank you, Jackie. Any questions, cultural? Or messages to take back? All right. Thank you very much for those quarter, for uh fourth quarter reports. Uh we have a town property uh use. Um Rodney Sapeta and Teresa. How are you this evening?
Good, how are you?
Fantastic. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And pretty low impact, Ollie, for this one. Okay. Any, any questions?
Mr. Chair. Do we have to move this or do you have to sign it?
No, it's it's a motion.
Okay, I uh I moved to approve the application for town property use event permit for Rodney Sapeta um for October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? What's the um the condition right now of the uh of the um?
Gazette?
Yeah, the Gazette.
On Christmas tree.
Yeah, there was, actually.
If there's any, you you see, um you know, we can help them out. In terms of like when when the the lawn is mowed or otherwise, just to make sure that it's kind of prepped up. You know, it's their wedding. We want your pictures to look nice, right?
Thing.
Yeah, so. Um if you, if you see it ahead of time, um can you contact you or would you give like Bob's number?
I have a note here and we'll follow up.
Okay, yeah, we'll make sure that uh, you know. You know what I mean?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion?
Lions Club doesn't decorate a week before Halloween. They decorate on that day, right?
Historically, that's correct.
Okay. Yeah, it's like a all hands on deck. It is, yeah, a flurry activity. Uh any? Yes, Gil.
Saturday and October is considered the sweetest day.
Oh, nice. That's so sweet. Thanks for making our night. That's awesome.
All right, if um on the, on the motion to grant the town property use application approval to Rodney Sapeta and Teresa, um how would you vote, Matt?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Enjoy your day.
Ollie's going to be the one that. Hey, let's see. Uh Tom. We're ready for you.
Seems like I've been sitting a while.
Well, you have.
Good evening. I hope it's been interesting for you. It's, it's always an educational experience coming to a town meeting or even a selectman's meeting. Just so many different things you learn and
Yep.
care about and see what you folks unfortunately go through sometimes.
Yep, it can be tough, but I mean, it's required. I I I think that if we, if that, if we didn't do a good job, that we wouldn't be doing our due diligence and the people just wouldn't have any faith. It's good.
Absolutely.
All right, Tom, you're here to talk about the Eighth Annual Motopalooza Fundraising Event.
Yep, that's uh um our annual fundraiser for the uh car show on the common with uh Boot Hill Express playing on the bandstand. And uh some very nice cars on the common and good food and just a good time for all the all the townspeople to come out and just do something on a Sunday. And the uh the weather's been, I don't want to jinx it, but the weather's always been pretty good for our events.
I think the last one last year, um I was going walking over to my Jeep to get in to go home, and it started raining. So I think that was very well planned. Um but um.
No, and and I appreciate everybody involved that helps us out with this, the um the approval of the fire chief, the police chief. Um Bob, don't um setting us up for tables and and um trash cans. What Holly's done to get all the stuff together for us. Um the Cultural Council for their support on all of our events. And I know I'm probably going to miss people, so I apologize for missing anyone, but we do appreciate it.
Yeah.
On behalf of the local society. So.
Okay, the layout that we have in there, that's probably what you have done in the past.
Yeah, that one, um that one's a little bit older. The piece that goes between Boynton and Ballinville Road,
Yeah.
that shortened up a little bit. We're not, we're not using that whole piece, but um.
Oh, I see what you're saying. But this layout generally works.
It does. It does. Um this year we're bringing in uh some craft vendors. We've sent out nineteen applications for craft vendors and I don't have an update as to how many are coming out, but I think that was uh that was, that was uh my idea. I've gone to previous car shows and I went to one where they had about thirty craft vendors. And I thought it was a good idea for the folks that aren't necessarily there for the cars, but bring in also people that don't really, aren't interested in cars, but want to, you know, pick up some from crafty items and stuff, so. We'd like to see it become a um a major event on the common for the, for the townspeople, so.
If I'm not mistaken, in years past, you even had a motorized washing machine with which had the definitions of Motopalooza.
Yeah, that was, that was an incredible story. I was out in the back of the building. And a gentleman came out with a couple of five-gallon buckets, and he was looking for water for his washing machine. And I said, well, I said, um, do you live near the building here? He just, you know, the water, something they show the water. And he says, no. He said, I got a motorized washing machine. I said, I gotta check that out. So he he filled up his two five-gallon buckets and I followed him over to his washing machine. Incredible piece of machinery. Um, nineteen thirties, right around the nineteen thirties. And the original reason they developed those was from rural farmers um, that didn't have power yet. To uh, be able to wash their laundry. That was a, that was a good, that was a good thing to see, there was a, there was a little small. Like a small bulldozer that they used to use, they used to drop with a helicopter into um. Um, war zones or something to, to, to do that, I, I don't remember the whole specifics, that was two or three years ago.
Get old tractor, and old tractor motors.
Tom, I got a question about the vendors, so I see the um, cross from the gazebo, there's the veterans park. One, one, I believe, infamous, okay, is there enough room on that island?
Um.
Have vendor, vendor.
The vendors have changed up a little bit, we're gonna kind of pepper them out, out amongst all the cars instead of one specific location and that. Was uh.
I would cut off, I don't know if it's possible, I mean, it sounds like you've already interacted with public safety, but.
Yeah, we're not gonna, I don't.
In between the gazebo and that park, I, I'd be concerned, like if, even if they, like they temporarily block that road off, it, it would not. I, to me, it would not be a, a large impact to that area to be able to have to go up another. Another, I know that was, you know, there's been talk about trying to change that area, but I would just be concerned about people walk, walking across.
Yeah, cert, cert is um, helping us out with that again this year, I, I wanna thank them, I'm, I'm.
A hundred percent.
Apologize, I'm one of the ones I forgot to thank, so um, they've been very good with our events, they've been very beneficial in helping us out. Uh, taking care of the parking, taking care of the, the street crossings and such.
Awesome.
So.
Okay, sounds good, any, any other questions for Tom? I entertain a motion.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve the application for town property use event permit for the Narragansett or Historical Society's eighth annual Motopalooza event. On September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion to for the town property use application for Narragansett, Narragansett Historical Society. How would you vote, Matt?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for.
Thanks, Tom. Good luck, enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stop by.
You're, you're definitely it, I mean, we, um, I'm gonna, I mean, uh, unless there's an objection, I'm gonna pull item K up to right now.
No objection.
You're welcome. Nicole, how are you?
I'm good, how about you?
Excellent, uh, thank you for all the materials that we have in the packet, a very, very nice letter and a lot of pictures.
Thank you.
For yours.
Thank you. Okay, so um, we have occupied, first off, I want to say thank you to all of you, uh, both current board and previous boards. That have allowed us to use the previous animal control facility and operate as a himsa haven. Cause if it wasn't for everyone involved, you know, from way back when, from nineteen ninety-nine when we were a foster facility. And then in twenty thirteen, when we leased the Templeton facility, and then in twenty eighteen, when we acquired Winchenden, all of that along the way. Made us who we are today, you know, and um, building that we now currently occupy became available. And we took the opportunity and we said, you know, and never mind what it could have, should have, maybe possibly, we just gotta do it. So we did it, but I just want to thank you all for allowing us to do it, cause if it wasn't for you and if it wasn't for people and believing in us and giving us the opportunity. We wouldn't have been able to grow, so thank.
I have an himza cap, um, very proud of Eleanor.
Eleanor, yes, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Himza kitty.
Pretty proud moment, yeah.
So I just want to say thank you, cause it means a lot to us, you know, given that opportunity. So with that said, um, on the property, we do have a shed, it's like twelve by twelve or twelve by fifteen. It's a great shed, lot of storage, it's got two tiers in it and we want to donate that to the town for use. Like I said, it's a good solid piece, and we also have a trailer on the property, I don't know if you've ever, if you've been to the property to see the trailer. It's a nineteen sixties Vagabond trailer, we got from Mister Harris down the street. Um, it has its own hundred amp panel, I had it added by Templeton Municipal Light, so it's got its own pole well back, hundred amp panel. It's got separate heating zones in each room, there's like, what would have been, you know, a trailer to live in. So you have your kitchen, has a programmable wifi thermostat with its separate heating. Living room, kitchen has its own separate, again, all separate controllable panels um, with thermostats that were installed. The back has a thermostat, front's got a thermostat, um, and it's very sound and it's a very good piece, it's be it old.
Right, yeah.
But it's a very good piece and I think it would be useful going forward for whatever you choose to use it. You know, and like I said, it's got its own service, its own electricity, its own programmable thermostats, so I mean, it's. It doesn't have any running water, but you know, I mean, the animal control facility has the, has the water, so. Um, yeah, but it's, it's, I mean, water could be hooked up if you really wanted to, um, but yeah, it's, it's a great piece, so we'd like to donate that to you as well. Cause we currently do not have a use for it at our new place.
It was a lot of good, good explanation and um, and Ed's letter.
That's Ed.
Yeah.
He's very thorough.
We still have the key from the nineteen sixties.
No, we don't, so that's another thing too, it's got an updated door, we put a thirty-two inch door. Um, both the Templeton um, animal control facility and the trailer both have um, key locks. And I have the keys to them, um, trailer's got another lock box, just in case the battery fails, you got a backup key. Um, so yeah, and they have storm doors, so everything's been updated in terms of that, so. The trailer door, you had to kind of like lift it up and hip check it, so it was getting to be a little bit too much, plus you couldn't lock it from the inside. And with volunteer's safety, I was worried about it, so, um, so we'd like to donate that to you as well. So the trailer and the shed, they're both very useful items. Yeah.
Any uh, any, anything from the town, Bob or otherwise, any other advisements or? You're good to go, good to proceed.
I believe all we'll need is the key code and.
Yeah, I'll give you key code and keys, the only thing is um, on the storm door of the shelter, the last bad windstorm we had. All the recyclables blow up the driveway from the um, complex from the um, from D-Mel. Um, so something blew up and hit the door and it smashed it, so the top part, the glass just needs to be replaced in the, in the main shelter. And that's about it, we never got around to doing it, but yeah, it just shattered and I was like, what the heck happened, but yeah, it was just the wind. So.
Any other questions for Nicole?
Yeah, but it's, I mean. We'll even leave the curtains if you'd like.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
I move to accept the donation of the trailer shed from a himsa haven.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion for the donation of the trailer and shed from the himsa haven, how would you vote, Matt?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes, thank you.
Tim? Yes, and I vote yes as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Very much, good luck, and thank you for everything and guys love coming to visit, we're having a uh, grand opening October fifteenth. You're all invited, it's gonna be, I think eleven o'clock right now, I don't really know, but um, you're all invited to come and uh, to see our facility. Thank you very much, thank you, have a wonderful evening, thank you.
Yeah, now where'd I? I, okay, we're at action item, I, uh, boot drive, Otter River, um, council night, the Otter River Council Knights of Columbus. Oh, sorry, sir, I didn't know that you were also here for that. Glad you were next.
It's always good to be next.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, uh, and thanks to all the members of, of the board for your service to, to the town of Templeton. Greatly appreciated, um. My name is Ernie Turkard, I live uh, on South Road, Templeton, I live uh. Fifty-seven years until, it's enough on my profile, but I'm, I'm representing the Otter River Council Knights of Columbus and we're requesting permission to conduct uh. Our annual boot drive and this is uh, this year is gonna be October seventh, Saturday, October seventh, from eight AM until noon time.
There it is.
This is something that we do, have been doing uh, every year for the last.
Yep. I think George, George usually comes in front of us, yes, correct, yeah.
Uh, so we're requesting permission for that again this year, um. I've uh, uh, I've checked, I've left a voicemail message for uh, for the chief, although he didn't, uh, hasn't gotten back to me. Uh, you know, ask him to get back to me if he had any concerns or anything, that's something that we check within every year on and it hasn't ever been a problem, so.
Okay. Uh, Holly, any considerations, anything?
No, I actually have reached out to the, the chief, the fire chief and uh, like, you should do all these things and they're all fine for that.
Okay, since the intersection of Dudley Road and South Road.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, um. All, you have all the sa- proper safety, like are you, you're considering all the proper safety gear, like a vest or otherwise, cones?
We'll have signage out, cones.
Right.
Will be vested, uh, yeah.
Mister Chair, I move to approve a boot drive held by the Otter River Council Knights of Columbus.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? And that, um, that's for Saturday, October seventh, correct?
That's, oh, I should have said that, sorry.
You want to amend?
I'll amend and including the date, um, Saturday, October seventh, and what were the hours again?
Eight AM until noon.
Eight AM till noon.
Second amendment.
Awesome, thank you very much, team. Anything else? All right. On the motion uh, to approve a boot drive for Otter River Council Knights of Columbus, how do you vote, Matt?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a great boot drive.
All right, good luck, wish you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Wish you success. Okay. And I think I saw, let's see, I, this is item J. We, are we, are we pa- are we passing over item J? Thank you, the motion. Motion, uh, make a motion to pass over item J.
So seconded.
And uh, motion with, with a second to pass over item J, any discussion? And none, um, motion to pass over item J, how do you vote, Matt?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Hims is done. Okay, uh, action on item L. And Adam, you said you were gonna cover that. At least that's what I thought you said.
That is correct. Uh, on this one, uh, you have uh, Feshet Construction's willing to donate their time. For the uh, to build the salt shed. Uh, I think uh, all the board needs to do is just accept this donation of their time and uh. We continue moving forward with that and getting that project completed, um. I think uh, the community would really like to see this done, um, so uh, very kind of Feshet Construction to. To volunteer their time, um, and Bob asked me to speak this evening for him, so. That's what I have for you.
This is, this is salt and sand.
Salt shed.
Salt shed?
The one Jeff.
No, Jeff was responsible for the, the sand shed.
This is community, community salt shed is what this is.
Yeah, right.
So it's different, two different.
Unless he did the salt as well, I don't think he advocated for a salt, because that's, that's in the back. Jeff was concerned about the people getting the sand in the front.
As I understand, it's a mixture blend, so like we had it before.
Okay.
So two buildings?
No, one.
That's one.
I can, well, the, the, you have the salt shed in the back for the, but this will be up front.
This is the one in the front for the resident.
Okay. So I got it, yeah.
I thought it was just sand.
Mister Chair, go ahead, you do it.
Oh. I move to accept the donation of time, labor, to build the salt, salt shed from Feshet Construction.
Second. Move a motion and a second, any discussion?
Very grateful.
Hmm, yep. Okay, hearing none on the motions for the donation of time they were to build the salt shed by uh, Feshet Construction, how would you vote, Matt?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Thank you very much. Hey, you have in front of you for item M as in Mike. The warrant for the twenty twenty-three special state primary.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
I move to approve the warrant for the twenty twenty-three special state primary election and for the board to sign.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none on the motion to open the warrant for the twenty twenty-three special state primary and for the chair. Uh, for the board to sign, excuse me, uh, how would you vote? Now?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Item N as in November, action related to senior center donation.
Mister Chair, I move to accept the senior center donation as presented from Richard and Gloria Matilla in the amount of one hundred dollars.
Seconded.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Thank you.
Or great thanks, right?
Right.
Thank you so much.
Hundred dollars is a lot.
It is, the village comes forth again.
Yep. I think, I think it's on, it's on every, every agenda.
Yeah, quite literally, yeah, yeah, there's at least one every time we, every time we meet.
Any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion to accept the senior center donation of a hundred dollars from Richard and Gloria Matilla, how do you vote, Matt?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Joe, Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Next item is action related to tennis and pickleball courts at Gilman Way, and this is the bid award.
Mister Chair, you had, we had a bid opening on August thirtieth at two PM. For the uh, all-weather tennis and pickleball courts at Gilman Way. Uh, came in premier fence, uh, hundred seventy-eight thousand five hundred, unfortunately, uh, CPC has. Hundred thirty-nine thousand five hundred appropriated, so as I understand it, the CPC will be meeting, Community Preservation Committee. Will be meeting tomorrow to discuss this and see if they're gonna go to Fall Town Meeting for additional funds, so. Um, in the bid package, it said to select where be the awarding authority, but you could delegate that to me, uh, subject to necessary funds. And if CPC supports that funding and go, proceeds forward, then. Um, I could take the appropriate steps. That's all I really got on this one.
Could you say that again, so we, we do, um, the bid came back at one seventy-eight five, but we don't have enough appropriated?
Correct.
Okay, how much more?
Oh, roughly, they're looking at roughly ninety thousand more, because this is just for the tennis courts. It doesn't include the fencing that needs to be done as well, so they're looking at additional funds CPC, probably eighty to ninety thousand.
Our review in the warrant?
Correct.
Okay. Is the motion, it wouldn't be necessarily funny, subject to available funding.
However, the board would like to.
Cause that'll be made available. Any, any questions for Adam or make a motion?
Just a qual- qualification, we said CPC has obligated one thirty-eight nine hundred, is that correct? Believe it's one thirty-nine five hundred.
One thirty-nine five hundred, thank you.
For the, for the total amount, so.
Right.
Unfortunately, that, that's just for the uh, courts, so that's why you'll see such the. The difference that they're gonna need to.
Town meeting.
So you are going to take it to Fall Town meeting?
It would be the CPC that would sponsor the article if they support um, the additional funds.
Okay.
They have to go to.
Their meeting.
So, I'm a little confused, I'm sorry.
CPC has not to go to capital.
Okay, they'd have to go to capital, it's just a warrant. The money's coming.
This was our, this is money that's already been. This is, this is CPC funds that have already been appropriated.
And they're asking for more.
Correct.
All right, and I get the difference.
It doesn't make the difference out of there.
You have two questions, um.
Oh, I shouldn't say they are, we will find out.
We're gonna ask, yeah, they're gonna, they're, they're attempting to put it to town meeting, right?
Adam, can you use incremental funding for this and what is the expiration on that?
Quite frankly, it's up to the vendor if they're willing to hold the price.
But they didn't give an expiration?
As far as I know, it would be.
Materials change, you know, costs change and otherwise, so you may want to check back with them to see if there's a. If we, if we give you au- authority to, to go through with this, I just want to make sure that the bid doesn't. You know, expire and then you gotta come back.
We'll take the appropriate steps.
Okay.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
I move to designate authority to award the bit luminous all-weather tennis and pickleball courts at Gilman Way. To the town administrator, subject to the necessary funding be appropriated.
Hey, we have a motion, do you have a second?[1772.11]
Second.
That we have a motion in a second? Tim, you know, like all, like legal A's or, uh, or otherwise, um, subject to necessary funding or subject to available funding, you know, when you get to the end of the fiscal year and you wind up having to make appropriations and it's always they got that statement on it that says subject to the availability of funds. Would that be appropriate here rather than necessary funds? We know it's, how about necessary and of it, uh, available? Subject to availability in the, the, the necessary funds.
Either way. It's CPC has to vote on this first, then it'll go to the town meeting warrant, so that would be, um, subject to the approval of the town meeting. And appropriating the funds.
Yeah, I said, and in my motion, I said, subject to necessary funds being appropriated.
Okay.
I, I.
Okay.
I just.
I understood what your question was.
Yeah, I understood what his, uh, motion was, that's why I seconded it, because it covered us on that one.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion to designate award, uh, to the town administrator subject to.
Subject to necessary funds being appropriated.
Got it. Um, how do you vote, Matt?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, we're up to item P. Adam, do you have this one?
I do. This was one of the, uh.
Here the, the, the sidebars. So if you can either buy it or in the hall. Again?
This was one of the select board goals was to finalize an agreement with the town of Winchton. This, uh, I have in front of you, uh, discussions with Bill McKenny, the, and from town manager in Winchton. Uh, there's some administrative costs that come with this. Fortunately for us, we, now that we have a grant writer, I, I, I spoke with the DPW director in Winchton who let me know about a grant available to cover some of these costs of a grant of roughly four thousand plus or minus. And, uh, that should take care of some of the, uh, costs associated with this, but I think this will give us a, uh, an agreement with them, um, to, for residents in Templeton to continue using the, uh, Winchton transfer station. And we finally formalized this, um, into an intermunicipal agreement between the two towns and, uh, I'm working on, with another, uh, intermunicipal agreement with the town of Winchton as well. Uh, very, very good people to work with over there and we're fortunate to have such a great partner, um, uh, with their, our neighbors over in Winchton.
Yep.
I have, I have a, um, got it on the, uh, the grant for it. You know, tell that grant writer to get on it. Is that an enterprise fund, like how, what the operation of that transfer station? Um, if they're charging us and our citizens are paying, um, you know, can we kinda walk through that for a second? If, if they're an enterprise in our, and we're paying for the use, but our residents are also paying into it. Is that some kind of consideration? Or is that part of the factor?
How, uh, it was described to me is they have administrative costs to run the transfer station. So if those funds are being used from the residents for whatever trash bags or for permit fees and the like.
Revenue for them.
Okay. But also remember, very important to note here, any Templeton resident can go over there and if they have grass clippings, for example, they don't have to have a permit. They go over there and drop their grass, grass clippings off without a permit, the same way Winchton residents can, so those services.
Without a fee.
Without a permit, yes. So yes, we are paying some cost.
There is some, uh, services that the residents would, would see from this that isn't an out-of-pocket or, or à la carte.
Correct.
Cause I, I use it and it's à la carte for like bulky waste.
And hazardous waste, uh, uh, materials you could bring there every day, um, but you would have to believe you have to have a permit for those.
Losing, that, you know, we're paying, but it's part of, you know, our, our money is assisting in that enterprise fund already, but.
It says same trash fees as, as a charge to Winchton residents, so they must have to budget it in what they're charging us in twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, they must also have to budget some of that in because of all the regulations and rules for their own town. And then charge the residents too.
The, the number seventy dollars for the, uh, the permit to go upstairs is resonating in my mind. I don't use the facility, but that seems to be the number that I can recall. So they try the folks who are per year. And that would fall under the state's pay-as-you-go or pay-as-you-throw program. Uh, recently at an MRPC meeting, that was a big point of discussion because that is all changing, which may negate this entire intermunicipal agreement. And I have to agree with Chairman Perry, if we are already doing a pay-as-you-throw, I don't see why we would have to enter and start paying five thousand and seventy-five hundred and ten thousand dollars when the, not everybody is using it. And if you're not benefiting from it, I'm, I'm, I'm kinda leery on this one, especially with some other things that are currently in the mail.
What's the, um, you know, on the flip side of that, if we do not have, so they offer, um, they offer bulky waste, hazardous waste, you know, wet garbage that, you know, the two-dollar bags, um, recyclables.
Yep.
Do they still do that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, as a service that's, um, out of all of the different recycling and waste fist, uh, choices that we have in the community, a municipal sponsored one, what, what other options are there?
Very expensive ones.
Yeah.
I currently have one. So I'm actually swaying toward this.
Right.
I gave myself a lot of money per year, a lot of money, cause I think I pay two hundred a quarter.
So this become, this becomes like a, a, a Templeton subsidized waste.
That's what I'm.
Option.
It's an option.
Okay.
And I know some elderly people who do use it because
the, the Price is Right type of, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, they don't do like tick marks or any, I mean, you know, they don't even you know, checking my license there or something like that, so I have no idea how much we're already, you know, if we over, you know, if we overstayed our, our, uh, welcome to begin with and now, you know, we're gonna have formalized agreement.
I just find it to be, that's a reasonable thing to offer our citizens, I think, I'm certainly interested in discussing.
That is, that is a really good point, I'm glad that you mentioned, you know, as a, uh, war.
It's, it's a huge difference financially for, from, it's huge even for myself, I'm like reading the contract the other night, I said, oh, this looks pretty good, I could do the.
If I had to pay for bulky, so I have waste management now, uh, if I had to pay for bulky waste.
Extra.
I wouldn't, I don't think I would, like a thousand dollars for.
I wouldn't say.
Soft dumpsters.
I don't have anything good to say.
Furniture, mattresses and all it.
Oh, I, I fully understand the spirit and intent of this, but in light of some of the proposed changes that were telegraphed to us at the last MRPC, and I'm also curious how long we have been doing our current where the citizens can get the, the permit to use this facility. You know, I, it, it just, there was a question.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
So if there are changes coming, do you know what the time might be?
We're at the mercy of the legislator. It's proposed bills to the House, nothing yet to the Senate, is how it was telegraphed at the last MRPC. It's gonna be tomorrow or never. But then if they change the law, the agreement could become null and void.
Well. Mister Chairman?
Yes.
I move to approve the intermunicipal agreements, Winchton Transfer Station as presented to the board.
Seconded.
I have a motion in a second.
I just, Sir Chair. I also just wanna.
We're in discussion.
I just wanna bring attention to the fact that I negotiated them down on the, on this nominal fee, um, it really was, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars additional for each one of those years, and when I countered, uh, Winchton did accept that by counter, so there was due diligence involved with these negotiations. It's for the.
It was ninety-five, ten, well, thank you for that. Any other discussion? Hearing none on the motion to, uh, approve an intermunicipal agreement with the town, uh, town of Winchton Transfer Station. Um, how do you vote? Did we say who, did we specify who would sign, or is that all of our signatures on?
No, it's actually, I think it's the administrators. On behalf of, on behalf of.
Yeah.
Julie, did you make that?
I didn't, I didn't specify that it was either town administrator, so I don't.
You just add that in there for the town administrator to sign.
Yep, for the town administrator to sign, we have that hall.
Yeah.
I'll second, I'll second the amendment.
Perfect. Any further discussion? Hearing none on the motion for the, uh, approving the intermunicipal agreements with the Winchton Transfer Station and for the town administrator to sign, how would you vote, Matt?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Tim?
Uh, reluctantly, I say yes.
And I am a yes as well. Alright. Okay, uh, last item is a discussion related to, uh, ARPA premium pay in, in your park, uh, in your, your park. There's my one allowance for the. You have, hey, you have a memorandum, uh, from town administrator to the board, uh, laying out, uh, the discussion for ARPA premium pay. Mister TA, if you want to, you can brief by exception, otherwise, or you can go right into the discussion.
I will briefly go over this because you have my memorandum within your packet. And, uh, I wanna note that the, the requests that you see within the chart were from a while back.
Yeah.
So when it was noted, I think on public input of, about veterans, I wanna note that the new veterans officer did not submit that, um, just for the record.
Okay.
To clarify that, um, so we received numerous, uh, requests from various departments, uh, sewer, light and water included. Uh, I've, I've spoken, uh, the chair and I are working on finalizing the ARPA spend plan, but in this one, I, I, the, the importance was to have the discussion with the board on what we wanna do uh, relative to our full-timers and part-timers that were employed here, um, during the COVID and then are still employed. And to show some type of appreciation behind the logic, so my thought was to have a flat uh, rate, um, bonus, if you will, of fifteen hundred dollars for each full-time employee and five hundred dollars for each part-time employee, I think this shows, uh, a debt of gratitude for such, for a lot of departments and, um, employees that I'm really proud to work with, um, from the various departments. We have really, uh, a good team, um. You know, there's times where I get frustrated with whatever, whatever the matter might be at times, but overall, I think we, we're pretty fortunate here in Templeton and, um, show our debt of appreciation for their service, um, I felt it appropriate to request a one-time bonus and, and that would have a significant savings from the original request. Um, and then I think the employees would really, uh, appreciate the select board, um, having their back. And some, and public jobs are not easy, public jobs are very difficult, very demanding. Um, they're not easy to do. And, um, I think I'm pretty proud to work with such a great group of people, whether it be light and water, whether it be sewer, whether it be our own town departments. Um, I think we have a good team. Um, I remember those days when Jackie was running around with the food pantry and all the amount of work she did, just, and she's here tonight, so that's why I'm recognizing Jackie, I'm not trying to point you, single you out by any means. But I'm just, I'm just saying overall, Lori Vida, another one, did a fabulous job, uh, with communications during the pandemic. Um, those are just a couple of our employees, but I think we all came together. Um, I was fortunate to have the select board chair with his education, uh, helping out as well, um, on this and, um, thank you, um, that's what I have for the board. Um, I, I leave it to you. Um. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. So, Mister Chair?
So I'm looking at what we have, obviously we have your memo. Um, we have a, um, we have a submission for ARPA from, uh, from Templeton Light and Water. And those are asking for, uh, that basically a hundred dollars per week of the pandemic, if I, if I remember correctly, right, right? Okay. Um, then we also have the note here from the firefighters union here in Templeton saying that they will decline anything. Um, uh, basically stating that they understood the rest of the job entails when they took it and that, uh, they, uh, don't want to, uh, they also don't wanna slight any of the per diem workers, anyone else that wouldn't be eligible, and that's completely understandable. Um, I know when I look at this, um, I think I agree with Adam's uh, proposal as opposed to what the ARPA request that we have here with us, so I think that in my mind, it would be, um, it would be prudent to have Adam come back to us in two weeks with an ARPA proposal with corrected, not with the correct numbers for fifteen hundred dollars per full-timer, five hundred dollars per part-timer for all personnel, who I would assume this is for all personnel who are still currently employed with the town of Templeton, correct? Okay, um, so I would, my thought process is that we should come back in two weeks with a corrected ARPA proposal for that, whatever that number is. And we can, uh, take action on it then, um, but, uh, I think that, uh, what we have here tonight is, um, we shouldn't take action on, and i- if, if we're gonna go with Adam's proposal, what his suggestion is. Um, that's just my, that's my two cents on the situation.
Basically sharpen the pencil with the resubmitted.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much, just, just do the, do, do, do the due diligence and put it in a corrected ARPA request for the correct amount with the correct terms and come back in two weeks.
Good. And we're using a metric of a hundred dollars per week, is that?
That was.
What's, what's given to us tonight from Light and Water, the two proposals that are given to us tonight, that's what that's based on, is a hundred dollars a week, so. The, from water, it was thirty thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, basically that was a hundred dollars a week.
Okay.
It's all broken down in here.
Different metrics?
Yeah, they're, they're, they use different metrics as opposed to what Adam's using, yeah.
What I understand, Adam wants to recognize them with something.
Yeah.
And the only, can I give my two cents?
Of course.
So my only two cents is not to diminish all the sacrifices, and I do know people suffered and their home life suffered, uh, during COVID, um, to keep things running up and running. But in lieu of what, um, Mister Bennett proposed tonight, I would say a thousand for full-time and five hundred for part-time, just to give us a little more wiggle room to give some back to the community.
But you, you know, to me, I heard what he said, but it's apples and oranges, I have no idea what other people made, he doesn't know, I'm a federal worker and that, and that I, I might be subject to some, so I might get more than, than that, I don't know yet, I haven't figured it out, it's the federal government, they'll figure it out in five years, but. Um, so other people, there, there are other provisions of ARPA, um, the PPP loans, all of these other things, you know, it's, it's not, it, it's a one, it's very one-sided to say that, to say, oh, every, no one else is getting that and, and they're putting the town people on a pedestal, they were essential workers, so you know, we're not that many people deep. So, I, I I just don't think the characterization of no one else got it. So they shouldn't either, when you have no idea what the other people is. Uh, yeah, is to answer, to answer what you were saying.
The only other point.
Of course, yeah, Julie.
Point, can I just make a statement on my thought on the whole thing? I can say as a state worker, I was an essential worker, I was a frontline worker, we didn't see any type of benefit for the first two years of COVID. But when we did, we appreciated what we received because we were acknowledged for our work and we realized that many different people in many different careers were home workers, you know, they were able to stay home and work, we were not. We were PPE from head to toe. Um, when the government took a little while to find the funding and finally decided to recognize nurses and direct service workers and frontline workers in the medical field. Our small stipends that lasted us a couple of years just kept us in our careers, I can tell you, cause somebody said thank you on a financial level, so. For me, whatever the number may or may not be, I'm gonna support it one hundred percent for the essential workers that worked throughout COVID in the town, and, and yes, Jack, you are one. Lori was a lifesaver on so many levels, so many phone calls, so many quick answers, if she didn't have the answer, she got the answer and she got back to you in twenty-four hours during COVID. That was pretty impressive work, so, in my opinion, at some point, whatever's put in front of us, it's a yes for me.
Hang on, let me, let me do the, the board for. Hang on, let me, let me do the, the board first and then I'll, I'll get to you.
Give the note that I, um, that I wanted to make, Mr. Chair, too, is that um. In what we've been given tonight, we only have ARPA proposals from Light and Water. Um I would want, I wouldn't want to just approve them tonight. I would want to have the entire package from the. One shot and one shot, whole town. Thank you. Yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to.
Okay. I, you know, I think, did you use the word cap? We're talking about trying to cap our, you know, so we don't have um runaway spending on premium pay. So we have basically category. We had two point one, two point two?
Two point four million, and this would roughly is one hundred thousand.
Your proposal.
Yeah. My proposal, correct.
Just for water and sewer though.
For all, include, inclusive of sewer, water. And light. One hundred thousand.
What about the rest of?
The town departments as well.
Oh, I thought it was gonna be, uh, so this, so your estimate right now?
My, my, what I'm, what I'm going to bring to the board, because this is for discussion, for more for consensus purposes.
Yeah.
As Mr. Rebar eloquently put, I will be coming back with a proposal, but for discussion purposes, I just wanted to make sure that there was some consensus. So if you were supportive of this uh fifteen hundred dollars for full-time employees and five hundred for. Part timers that were employed, that are still employed here and that worked during the COVID, those are the folks that are eligible, then I'd draft, I would put together that proposal for the board.
We're the managers of the ARPA funds, so we're basically sucking up all of the different ARPA stuff. If you want to redo, like Matt was saying, redo a cover sheet. I, I'd like, you know, I don't know if we. I don't know if there's a, a point to parity, whether it's a lump sum or, or a lump sum derived from a hundred dollars a week or otherwise. I don't know if there's any. Um benefit to consistency where we adopt one, one methodology or, you know, it's, it's like you're a department head, kind of like, you, you know, you're dealing with. We're the top level people that are going to submit these ARPA requests, but I am interested in, you know, a cap to make sure that we're not runaway, but it sounds like we're headed to something that's reasonable. And also the uh Light and Water used sixty-six weeks. That's based on. Is it based on, what, what is the sixty-six weeks based on? If you don't have.
Well, that's what the departments uh put together on theirs, but that's why I wanted to keep it as uh.
Based on uh.
Simple as possible, minis, uh minis.
Federal emergency, um like, I would want. Though, that, that time period to tie to an official metric. So if we said, so I just looked, we declared state of emergency March sixteenth, twenty twenty. And then we ended it, you know, on purpose, you know, we had data to suggest June fifteenth of twenty twenty-one.
It says here, state of emergency period of sixty-six weeks, but Scott from the.
About the same, you know, fifty, so fifty-two. They may be, if, if they're tying to that, if that's where we got the sixty-six, I'm even, I'm even more on, on board. Because that then ties it to a specific declaration, especially if it are, our local one. So again, you can't do math in public without someone throwing something at you, but March sixteenth, twenty twenty to June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, if that ties it to that.
About sixty-six, yeah.
There you go. I love, I really, I like, I like that, that it's tied to us.
Yeah.
Does it include retired, retired?
If they retired during that time. Yep. Okay, so this was a discussion anyway. Uh hang on, so um. Cover, cover sheet and then a com, the, the completed ARPA.
Cover sheet, completed ARPA request, how much, the type, how much it will be for full timers and part timers and a total number.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
I, I kind of get the impression that we're, we're getting on the dining, the ARPA fund, so what is your, your plan to discuss use of that?
The whole thing. Um I'm working the final piece. We want to have the, we, we've got, we still have some maneuver time. Um you know, like, like we, like Jeff alluded to, um we've got some. We got, I, I need some runway, you know, um to be able to, to carry that home, but this won't represent a. A problem for that, that calculation to the end. There's, uh the way that we're talking about it tonight, it's well within uh the realm of possibility and, and honestly, um. Premium pay, I, I, it's such a, a horrible way to characterize it, because it sounds like you just, you know, that you're upping people for no reason otherwise, and that's not the case. But premium pay, I think is going to be a reasonable and fair and um like Julie was characterizing it as a just cost. But it will be figured into the total, uh which I just, we, we're not briefing the, the total spent um terminus um spend plan. Okay. Everyone's good?
Yeah.
Awesome, alright. Ladies and gentlemen, and that finishes new business. Uh we're going to move into old business. Um. Uh discussion related to the Boynton Library Project from Annual Town Meeting uh May twenty-eighth.
Hello. Um so this request was made to CPC several years back. Um and. What cha, I mean, the, the renovation plan is still um our intention. What's changed is that we now have um Bob Sozik, who's invaluable in terms of just looking at the project. And identifying priorities, and we've done that with the roof, the, the trim painting, the ramp. The steps and next up is electrical. So um. Once the electrical is complete, this needs, there's a lot of old knob and tube wiring. Um while we're updating that, we want to make sure that there are adequate outlets, you know, good lighting, anything that's electrical. World. Um once that's complete, we're going to be looking at restoration of the plaster work. The ceilings, you know, anything that was disrupted during that electrical phase. So um I, I recognize that CPC is trying to clean up old articles. I would, I would, I have asked their board to um to let this money remain with that intended purpose. Um. So um I'm not sure if they just need a, a more detailed breakdown of exactly what that will be used for, and Bob and I can try to put that together. Um we, we have a, you know, some gifted money, as you might recall, and an Ed Ward first left for us, so um. That plus the CPC money hopefully will accomplish what we want to do in terms of restoring the interior of the building now that we're at that phase.
Well said. Questions for Jackie?
They said you have a hierarchy of needs.
Bob's been, yeah, Bob's been great at identifying.
Question, just a general comment, because I remember this came up as a topic of discussion before. CPC and because it's a historical significance can do a lot of stuff with the exterior. We start getting into the interior, the electrical, this plaster, the ceiling work, that is not the scope of CPC. And that, in my mind, should be diverted and reverts back to buildings and grounds for maintenance of a town building. I know CPC was going to discuss it. I don't know if they did, and I don't know what the final outcome of that was.
You serious? Like you, you can't work on the inside?
Well, I could clarify.
If, if the outside is great, but the inside is falling apart.
So, so if I could. Adam, then do. Sure, you don't mind if I go?
No, go ahead.
So with Jackie. So what Jackie's saying is she has gift money for the electrical upgrades.
Yep.
The preservation of the building before any, they have to get into electrical areas is for the preservation of the interior of the, of keeping the same. The same way that they would others' projects of CPC, as long as you're preserving the historical architecture, whether it's interior or exterior, that's all part of the CPC. So the CPC of the seventy thousand dollars uh that's there um for preservation of the building. Um I think is, because that building looks beautiful. I drove by it the other day, the, the work that's getting done there and how we preserve that building, I think is vital. I think. You have a lot of people that go to the library because of. You walk in there and you say, wow, this is such a beautiful building and, and we were able to maintain that historical uh, uh preservation, if you will, of that building. I mean. You walk in and you must be proud every time, every morning when you go over there, and it's. The, the amount of work that went on, on over there, and this will be for the interior to preserve that. Um and at the same time, get their electrical from their gift money used, but then the CPC, the seventy thousand. For the preservation of the interior. Um for any damages that occurred from upgrading the electrical out of the gift money. I think that's.
Right.
Was what you were trying to.
Yes.
Good, Julie?
I'm just going to second what Adam said, because CPC funding is used for interior and exterior, and then Ben on a committee or two that has done nothing. It's great that preserving that building.
We had a, um, the master board of library commissioners has a architect on their staff who comes in, helps to advise libraries that are undertaking a renovation. She came out last Thursday. Wow, she took a million pictures. She's going to come up with a detailed, you know, kind of list of suggestions. All the way around for everything. And yeah, it's a great service. She, she loved the building too. She was, thought it was just a, a stunning building, which it is.
It burns, too, helps.
Right, the renovation, the um, the addition piece that was in that twenty eighteen article is, that was again. Us just kind of not having a good, you know, a person to help us, to help inform that grant, so we're not looking to um. You know, add an addition or anything like that. That's sort of off the table. Um but we think we can make. Make the best use of this footprint that we have and really make the library look beautiful inside, you know. So.
If you haven't seen the display. That was stunning. That was, it wa, it was very moving, caught you. Made you gasp.
Yeah.
The nine eleven display at the library this week is breathtaking.
We're going to work to try to get that up tomorrow.
On the website?
Correct, Polly just remind me in the morning, please. Jackie's already sent an email I just got up.
Zoom in on the flag. That was what took my.
Really nice, nice effort.
And the rock flag. Anyway, spoiler.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie.
You, you, Jackie. Right, uh last of all business is uh changing meeting dates discussion, Tim.
Yep, thank you. I requested this and we deferred it from our meeting on August eighth. I don't remember the timeframe. It was long before, I believe all the members of the board currently served. Select board meetings used to be held on a Tuesday night, and I don't remember whose watch that was changed under and what the rationale was. And I was just going to propose we consider putting it back, and the initial concern came to me from a prior board member, and that was just the OG whiz kind of question. It's like. Is there any reason the meeting is still on Wednesdays? Why don't you put them back on Tuesdays? And I said, you know what? That's a good question to ask. Now, at the time I had put this on, I was looking at some potential teaching schedules, which would be a conflict for my Wednesday nights. My. Part-time employment now, I am not available to get back into town at seven PM without taking days off. Because that is my, my skit stated work hours are ten AM to seven PM Monday, Wednesday, Friday, so I can work this, but like today, I took a little pagan to be here for the meeting. And it's a little self-serving on my part, but it is just a question. So not looking for an answer now, just some thought and we can.
Does it have to be a Tuesday? Could it be a Thursday? Because you said.
It could be.
Okay, well, Thursday, I know they have CPC.
Yeah.
Who else is on?
Advisory. I know that this will also spin other concerns and TCTV would have a say on this as well. And I know with some of the proposed changes on open meeting, all, all of our boards and commissions, the meetings should be televised, recorded. And alternative access means granted for everyone. So there's, there's a lot of moving pieces to this entire request.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I can just recall Tuesday nights, so I've, I've been on a long time, but. I remember we were Monday nights at one time, um we were getting very little participation. And I think that's what swayed the decision of the board at the time to try Wednesday evenings. Um we considered Thursday evenings, but I think we were thinking of the employees of the town because they don't work on Fridays. It was kind of asking them to work on their Friday night kind of thing. You know, I, I do recall conversations like that. I don't remember when I would be on a Tuesday, but the Wednesday meetings, in my opinion, have been more. I, well attended compared to the Monday, in fact, we will compare some Monday night, Wednesday night, and I would say Wednesday nights, we see more. In the seats, I don't know why, maybe it's middle of the week and I don't know, but.
Yep.
Um. Any night's fine with me. It's not going to matter.
Monday football, okay, consideration at all?
I would say.
Monday night football, yeah.
Maybe that's why we've been getting a lot of participation. Monday night was.
And the original ask that came to me was from a former member and chair of the board, so like I said, this is going back a few years, but it's like. I don't, I do not recall when it moved the things.
I, I teach on Tuesdays right now, but um, but I, I can certainly, you know, I, I heard what you said, you know, mean an answer right now. I can see if I could. I could switch that or how, how, you know, how that would impact, or otherwise, it's kind of. I've got a pretty good battle rhythm right now. Um sorry, your battle rhythm gets out of whack.
It happens, yep. Adapted all the time.
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment? Um if you guys were to move to Tuesdays, um you would have to change not only just two Tuesdays, but to a different week. Because we normally have planning board on the Tuesdays, the same week of select board.
Perhaps you and I can just like take it off and say, what, what is going to be the impact? When you come in and um sit at a table and. Sketch it out to the table, look at what our meetings would be versus uh normalized meetings for the other boards, but I think we can figure out if, if we can move it, and like Terry was saying, consider other days and what the impact would be.
Yeah, I have a commitment Tuesday nights that I. Have to get back to.
Alright, we'll take a look.
About starting the meeting Wednesday later, seven thirty and stuff?
That's funny.
Hey, I'm just trying.
Thanks, Terry.
I have a.
Oh, you have an hour commute, okay.
We would have to go early like.
Do you, do you want us to get you a, we want to get you a cot for your office over there because you'll need it?
Go early today, because I didn't want to be in Monsoon on the way home.
What, what's your obligation? Or, or um would earlier on Wednesdays or it, it blocks out the whole thing?
It, it, it blocks. I mean, I, I can adjust my work hours. I have a flex schedule.
Got it. Alright, alright, thanks, Tim.
Yep.
We'll see, we'll see what we can do. Um we do not have an executive tonight. Uh so our last item is board member. Um administrator comments. We're going to kick it off with um our educational liaison report that you have in your packet. And then we'll follow up with uh board member comments and then we'll. Be done before ten.
Yes. In the interest of being done before ten.
Yep.
Um I'm going to uh, I'm going to skip the more uh, the, the more uh, the standards parts of the uh.
Yeah, that's what we want us to focus on, because we have your report, which is excellent.
Uh the two things that I really want to, um, I just really wanted to note. Um uh was number one, uh on uh the twenty-fifth of August, the superintendent's open, opening statement and um Alice training for the school district. Um there isn't, I, I did want to note that um, first of all, Alice training is active shooter training.
Yes.
Um and um this year NRSD will participate in one active shooter drill for all schools. Um this will be an announced drill. It will be well-informed and highly coordinated amongst the emergency team and the building staff to ensure as smooth an implementation as possible. Um the district will never have unannounced drills of this type. It is not a best practice due to the age of many of the schoolchildren, um particularly when we get down to the elementary level. Um so I wanted to make note of that. And the other thing that um we want, I wanted to make note of too was um.
Um, so I wanted to make note of that, and the other thing that um, we want, I wanted to make note of too was um. The uh Norfolk Agricultural Student, um, we have, I think we've got resolution finally with this. Um, one comment that I do want to make is that at no time did we, did we, the town or the district ever state this student would not be able to go to Norfolk Agricultural. The intention was always that this student was gonna be able to go. Um, the question, the path forward on the student's tuition's cost is always clear, we were gonna have to go to town meeting with that with a warrant to get the tuition. The question was, where does the transportation money come from? Does the school, uh, does the uh, the school board have to put it up? Does the town have to put it up? Adam reached out to Desi, um, we got clarification on that. And that clarification received on August twenty eighth, twenty twenty three was that the town must pay for the transportation costs and appropriate it. At the town, at town meeting, so we will do that. Um, but the district should assist with the implementation of the transportation. Because they already have the contacts, contracts in place, all that wonderful stuff, so that they can basically make a phone call, get a not, get a quote and give it back to us. Um, this is supported by. A advisory document that was published by Desi, and I know this is old, but it doesn't look like it's been uh superseded yet, so it, from what I can tell, it still applies. Um, it was published on twenty three November twenty twenty or twenty twenty oh four, um, highlight bullets five and six. Uh, in this case, um, but I'll I'll let you read that, but the uh, the guidance is there, um.
The one that starts new law?
Uh, that is the one that starts advisory on non-residential vocational transportation. Okay, bullets five and six there, basically along with Desi's um. Yep. Um, moving forward, so for this fiscal year. Um, we will have to take a warrant to the fall special town meeting. That warrant will be for approximately seventy thousand dollars, twenty eight thousand of which will be the student's tuition. Forty one thousand of which is the transportation cost that I I. That's sixty nine thousand, I said seventy because I gave a thousand dollar buffer in there, because, I mean, the way fuel prices are nowadays, give it a little bit of fluct, give it a little buffer there for fluctuation. For the next three fiscal years, twenty five through twenty seven, we're gonna have to carry a budget line item with the appropriate amount to cover the costs. And this will be determined through the normal budgeting process, um, the student is in ninth grade. Um, and they, we're, this is assuming they will attend Norfolk Agricultural for all four years, assuming they continue in the program. Um, and if at any point this student withdraws from Norfolk Agricultural and rules that either they're against it or Monty Tech. The money appropriated from the Norfolk Agricultural line would be transferred to the appropriate school district line to that. Um, for their appropriations at that point. Um. I would like to, um. With the town administrator, just put a guidance document together for us, so that if this situation happens again. We have clear instructions as to what we need to do.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, um, so. That's what we're gonna do, that's the, that's another piece that we're gonna do, um. And then the final two pieces are, um, that the superintendent of Norfolk Agricultural uh must comply with our budgeting processes for twenty five through twenty seven. Um, which means, whatever that Saturday, whenever that Saturday or Wednesday is that the schools present, you're coming, you're, and you're coming with numbers. Um, part of the reason we're here is because when we had our budget hearings back in March. The superintendent for Norfolk Agricultural came. Um, but he stated, while they had received the student's application, they did not think the student would be attending, so he gave us a tuition number, and that was it. And we, at that point, took his recommendation, he didn't think the student was gonna be attending, so we didn't do anything. Right, so we did, so we didn't budget it for it, okay? Um, they gave us the tuition number, no transportation cost. Um, we were never directly notified by Norfolk Agricultural, the student's admission to and acceptance of the spot. This is all found out via communications with the district and the student's guardian, which was then relayed back to the town. Norfolk Agricultural will just have to comply with our budget timelines. Um, there was another question whether Templeton would need to have a regional school district with Norfolk Norfolk Agricultural, and I believe the answer there is no. Um, I also provided you, um. Six oh three C M R four point zero zero, uh vocational technical education for general guidance. If you look at um subsection six, subpart B of this. It's the guidelines for um admitting students from outside of the district, which in this case uh would be. But uh specifically number four on that section is where is what happens when there is no. Um, tuition agreement between the district and the town.
Uh, that's interesting, I I know this is your report, but it looks like there's even provisions for uh d- denying.
There is, there is, um, yep, there is. Um, and the other thing I did want to mention here that I did confirm with the superintendent, there is a provision in there that states that they have to submit something to. Uh, Desi by a certain time that was done, so we are within compliance of the law on everything with regards to the student going. Um, so that's all done as well. Um, but that was what I wanted to bring forward, you're not gonna get a report like this every time. But um, that was, I know that the Norfolk Agricultural student was a sticking point, and we wanted to make sure we got that tied down. Um, cleanly, and I believe at this point we have a full resolution on it, and that's. Basically, uh, what we have left to do is a warrant on the town, uh, is a, an article on the town meeting warrant for fall for seventy thousand dollars to pay for this. And our, in our uh, our obligation there at this point will be completed, yeah.
Matt, can you please clarify, um. The new law provides for full state reimbursement of the cost, this is under advisory on non-residential, it's down on.
Yes, oh, it's six, I think you're talking about, right?
Is up with that, the new law provides for full state reimbursement of the cost of providing this transportation, subject to appropriation.
There's the key three words right there, subject to appropriation, so. They will provide full, they will provide full reimbursement of transportation, subject to appropriation. If the state does not appropriate the funds for full transportation, you're not getting full reimbursement, and that's been the case, we're not. Uh, seventy per, huh? Oh, well, for for the Norfolk, it's for the Norfolk Agricultural student, because it's it's. Our normal students are chapter seventy, the Norfolk Agricultural student is chapter seventy four, uh, because it's not, um, it's not within our uh. It's a, it's a, it's an intra-district uh agreement, basically, uh, chapter seventy four is a reimbursement of twenty five percent. So of the forty one thousand dollars that we have to appropriate for transportation, we'll see back ten thousand two hundred and fifty of it. Um, the reimbursement number, I believe, is different for NRSD slash Monty Tech, because that's chapter seventy as opposed to chapter seventy four. Did I hit everything?
I think good.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You know, people have questions on it or otherwise, or you wanna bring it, if you got something. This is, like you said, you, this is resolution, but if, for any other discussion.
Yep, absolutely, do you have anything else? God, I hope not.
Twelve minutes from ten, um, Harry.
I'm fine, thank you, sir.
What say you, Julie?
Actually, I'd like to go on the agenda for the next, um. Meeting for a scout hall update on my buildings.
Couple quick updates, uh, I already alluded the last MRPC meeting, the update and the proposals to changes on the recycling program, including the pay as you throw. Uh, another piece of it, there was an agency that's involved very heavily in the recycling and. A term near and dear to a lot of former federal employees, the reduced reuse recycle program is rearing its ugly head again, that's okay. Uh, there's a proposal currently at the House, nothing yet from the Senate, changing bottle deposits from a nickel to a dot. Language to provide for additional increases as needed, and there was a lot of pushback on that, because, okay, tell me what this additional increase. The the overall intended goal, and this is gonna go back to something that a few of us were old enough to remember, prior to plastic returnable bottles. We had glass containers, and they were indeed sent back and forth, cleaned, refilled, and put back out. Uh, they were already indicating, we're probably gonna start seeing glass making a huge comeback, because it is actually recyclable, the plastic products are not. It's less than ten percent post-consumable, we plastics get put back into.
You may not. And if you, I know you want to.
MRPC has been very actively this week, uh, we've been getting almost a daily message acknowledging. The storms earlier in the week, but we've already rescheduled quite a few, and in regards last week, the fatal fire in Apple. We were re- even looking at rescheduling some other things on the calendar. So they are paying attention to what's happening in every community participating, not just our own. So that's an awesome thing, that's all about.
You can bring it up.
The time is, uh, they have, you know how they have food trucks, well, they actually have refill trucks for laundry detergent. Bring your own containers time and time again, and they come into your community and you just go to the truck and refill.
I've got nothing.
Uh, I'll, I will be brief, uh, Bob usually handles this, but uh, if you drive around town, you'll notice uh roadwork, reclamation or base coat. Like the base coat on Highland Avenue has been put down. Shore Drive reclamation's going on, and the portion of South Main will be as well, so. Uh, we're seeing roadwork, I think we'll be seeing quite, quite a bit of uh. Well, you'll you'll be seeing a lot of state projects going on as well, uh, you see right now here, but as you all know, we have the. We notified the state with their bridges as well, so, but we won't see that till the next construction season, it appears, so. That's the Highland Avenue Shore Drive and portion of South Main, uh, that the board approved of their chapter ninety uh getting done. That's all I got, Mister Chair.
Also, uh, next meeting is September. Twenty seven. At eight, uh, six thirty P M. Um, I think there are no more announcements, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion.
Second.
Second, all those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, we are adjourned.